Everyone ready? Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the April 3, 2023 work session. Ask for a roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Kohler.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers. Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We'll move on to comments on any topic. We'll start with the individuals who notated that they want to speak at the beginning of the meeting, and then we'll move on to everyone else. We'll start with Jenna Sheridan. Just to remind everyone, you have three minutes. There'll be a timer. Please say.
I said the end of the meeting, but I'm not speaking right now.
All righty then. Just to remind, thank you. Just to remind everyone, say your name and what municipality or district you're from. Judy Lofton.
Good evening. I'm Judy Lofton. I live in Skippak, and I have a student at the high school. I want to remind everybody about the PVE survey that was, came out last year. It was taken in November of 2021 to assess the mental health of our students. And it was surveyed in sixth, eighth, 10th, and 12th grades. One of the questions was, during the past 12 months, did you ever seriously consider attempting suicide? Up to 22% of the students in PV said yes. In the past 12 months, did you make a plan about how you would attempt suicide? Up to 17% of our students said yes. And up to 9% reported one or more suicide attempts in the past year. So there's potentially many reasons for this. But the numbers have been increasing in the district for over a decade. When students are asked about the climate in the schools, 29% reported that they had been bullied. 15% reported cyberbullying. 19% said they don't feel safe coming to school. And the most common form of abuse that was reported among students was insults and name-calling. So I want to share also some national data that were compiled by the Trevor Project. According to a survey that they conducted in 2022, LGBTQ youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide compared with their peers. More than 1.8 million LGBTQ youth seriously consider suicide each year, and at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. So about four of them while I'm up here making this comment. 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide last year, and more than half of transgender and non-binary youth. The survey also found that LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming reported lower rates of attempted suicide. So I would like to call on the leaders in our district to work to affirm the existence of our LGBTQ community. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Tracy Tweedy. Tracy Tweedy?
Tracy Tweedy, Collegeville Borough. I'm here tonight to remind the board that you were elected to represent Perkyomen Valley School District's community. Recently, it seems as though certain board members may be more beholden to a national Republican agenda, to Paul Martino's money, or to Moms for Liberty than to our community. And if our community has shown you anything in recent weeks, particularly with today's student walkout, I think it's shown that we need to leave the books alone. We are wasting time talking about a non-issue when there's a really serious issue that needs everyone's attention. We've maybe been talking about a school police force for a couple of months, but let me remind everyone that we talked about turf for about a year before we made a decision. And so I don't understand why there has not been extensive discussion in the policy committee before bringing this to board for a vote today. It is extremely premature to be voting on this issue without a carefully and thoughtfully crafted policy that outlines exactly what we are planning to do with this police force. And I would also like to remind everyone that in one of the most recent meetings, Mr. Miller indicated that he would give these police officers assault rifles if he could. So I'm here to ask the board to push this back to the policy committee and ensure that we have very clear guidance in place before considering this for a vote. There have been too many, and there are currently too many unanswered questions. Lastly, I would ask that you consider working towards a unanimous vote for this issue. Every board member should be comfortable with the proposal for something this serious. This absolutely needs to be a bipartisan effort from this board because our children deserve it.
Chaz Klowen.
Chaz Klowen, Lower Frederick Township. I'm here tonight as a member of the Policy Committee to address Policies 109-1 and 109-2. I know they were added to the agenda for tonight and then removed. I'm glad they were removed, and I respect the decision to remove them. I've got significant concerns about these policies being voted into our district without the work of the Policy Committee. We had a conversation at the last Policy Committee about the overall philosophy of these two policies, and no agreement was reached, and no one had a chance to discuss the specific language of these policies. Conversation was cut short due to time, and several committee members, including myself, had unanswered questions about the language of these policies. Out of respect for the members of the Policy Committee, I'd like the board members to stop trying to add policies to the board meeting agenda that have not been honestly developed and sent for first reading by the Policy Committee. It's not in our best interest to bypass this process. To illustrate my point, I'd like to share one of the many questions I still have about the language in just Policy 109-2. 109-2 states that each library should maintain, quote, "a wide range of recognized classics." This may come as a surprise, but A, many classics contain language and content that this policy would prohibit. And B, the term "classics" has evolved over the last 50 years. At least one of the books that a board member tried to ban is considered by some to be a modern classic. We shouldn't have language in a policy that contradicts itself. Teachers will not endanger their jobs by violating school board policy, which means if pushed through as written, we'd need to shut down every library and every classroom library until we have a chance to review the content of every single book in the district to make sure it doesn't violate someone's personal view of what's age-appropriate. When policies and updates come to us from PSBA's PNN, we can get clarification of what they intended directly from the people who wrote the policy or the updates. I wish we could speak to whoever wrote these policies to ask questions about language and get a sense of their intentions. Unfortunately, I don't think any of us know where these policies truly came from. Currently, Policies 108 and 109 provide an opportunity for parents to challenge books and materials that they feel are inappropriate for students. There's already a method by which parents can opt their child out of taking certain books out of the library. Current policies protect the rights of parents without infringing on the rights of other parents. We don't need 109-1 or 109-2 because what we have can work if you just let it. I encourage all the members of the board to represent the entire school district. Try to find compromises that work for everyone. Let's avoid the lawsuits that'll inevitably come from trying to force restrictive policies on a district that doesn't need them. Let's avoid all that and not waste the money. Let's build policies together that unite our district, not divide us. Thank you.
Mary Henderson.
Hi, Mary Henderson, Skippak Township. I have one thing that I'd like to address with you all tonight: bullying. The CDC defines bullying as "any unwanted aggressive behavior by another youth or group of youths who are not siblings or current dating partners." That involves observed or perceived power imbalance. Bullying may inflict harm or distress on the target youth, including physical, psychological, social, and educational harm. Students who are bullied experience increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school. One of every five children has been bullied. Let that sink in for a minute. 41% of students who report being bullied at school think they will happen again. Bullied students indicate that bullying has a negative effect on how they feel about themselves, their relationships with their friends and their family, their schoolwork, their physical health. Youth who self-blame and conclude they deserved to be bullied are more likely to face negative outcomes such as depression, maladjustment, and prolonged victimization. Recently, I've had to report a text conversation I found on my own child's phone. I reported it to Mr. Creedon at PV West. The subject of the text has been bullied from the start of her middle-school career. It has been reported on many times, and not once has a punishment been given. I'd like to also add that this child is autistic. As a school, once a bullying incident takes place, you need to help to, uh, help the child identify the role he or she played in that incident and how his or her behavior affects the outcome. You need to develop clear rules against bullying and enforce those rules. It is in our bylaws, bylaws, it is in our handbook. The PV does not tolerate bullying. It's happening at East, it's happening at West, it's happening in your elementary schools. I'll end with this. According to the National Association of School Psychologists, bullying is a learned behavior. Aggressors are children who learn antisocial behavior at home, in school, or elsewhere in their social environment. And because it is learned, it can be unlearned. The older the aggressor, the more difficult it is to change. You owe our students better.
Rich Westlet.
Thank you. I came to a meeting a couple of months ago, and I sat here.
Name and where you're from.
I'm sorry, Rich Westlet, Skippak. I have a child at this school. And I came to a meeting a couple of months ago, and I saw some things here and heard some things here that have compelled me to want to speak. Certainly in, in favor of more unification, less divide, less bullying, less anger. But what got me here was my son came home and said on Monday, "Will my school have a shooter?" I want to preface this by saying what I'm about to say some of you will not agree with, and I know that. My father was a decorated Marine from 1960. He raised me that way. I went through 12 years of Catholic school. Some of the things that I'm seeing here at this school and in this country are very disturbing. It is my hope that we get a sense of semblance that looks something like God, family, and country. I don't understand the book issues, but they weren't issues that we had in the 70s and 80s. I do have a concern over the kids viewing things that they shouldn't be seeing. I believe in security for the school, and if that requires armed police officers, so be it. I'm a big believer in Vince Lombardi, the coach, who believed in God and family and the Green Bay Packers. We want to walk together with anybody who sees differences and sees the world different than we do. And in closing, I'd like to say that if my father was in this room, and it is my sincere hope that on the vote on May 16th, that when the pledge of allegiance is said, that everybody after May 16th's vote stands. Thank you.
Wade Weston.
Good evening. Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. First of all, I'd like to mention that tomorrow, April 4, is National School Librarian Day. I'd like to give a shout-out to our great Perkyomen Valley librarians who helped the students to learn research skills and work hard to maintain our library collections that promote learning, literacy, and representation for all Perkyomen Valley students. Next time you see one of our librarians, give them a big thank you. With regard to Agenda Item 8.07 for the hiring of seven school police officers, I cannot see how you're ready to make this decision yet. At the last board meeting and at the last policy meeting, there were still numerous unanswered questions around the need for armed police in the schools, how they would be deployed, policies that would need to be updated, alternatives to armed security, and finally, how you would make room in the budget for the million-plus-dollar spend these hires would require. Until you can answer these questions to the community's satisfaction, you are not ready to take this vote. With regard to Agenda Item 4.05, the elimination of the elementary Spanish special, this has been in the crosshairs for elimination for a long time, and I think it's a shame. One of the reasons cited is that students aren't speaking much Spanish by the end of elementary school. Developing Spanish, developing Spanish fluency or even literacy should never have been the expectation. It is more about cultural awareness, appreciation, and respect, all important topics from a social and emotional learning viewpoint. And when we were reviewing elementary specials when I was a board member, I felt that no one better exemplified the ideals of social and emotional learning better than the Spanish special's teachers. I want to close by saying that about a year ago, I attended a speech where the speaker quoted General Colin Powell urging his listeners to fit no stereotype. "Don't be what someone else wants you to be. Be yourself, and realize that you are great, you are impactful, and you will change the world." I agree with these words. This is excellent advice for young people. The occasion was Perkyomen Valley's 2022 commencement ceremony, and the speaker was Board President Jason Saylor. Now, today, we saw a group of students walk out of their classes to make a statement. They're telling us in no uncertain terms who they are, what they believe in, how they want to be treated, and what they expect from us. And my question is, are you going to listen to them? Or were these just words that were, that we thought sounded good in a graduation speech? Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Sandra Waters.
Okay, my name is Sandra Waters. I'm 67 years old. My children went to Perkyomen Valley, and my grandchildren go to Perkyomen Valley. And in 40 years of a taxpayer, I have never once felt compelled to come and talk to the school board, until now. Because now, we're talking about banning books. And banning books is a slippery slope. And while I agree, parents have the right to decide what is appropriate and not appropriate for their children to read, they do not, however, have the right to decide what books are appropriate for my child or anyone else's child to read. The language in the new policy addendum is vague at best, and as such, I don't think this banning is about books at all, but rather about the further marginalization of the LGBTQ community. This othering, "Our lives would be so much better if it weren't for those other people," is unfortunately all too commonplace in 2023 America. If you truly feel these books are questionable, put them in a reserved section of the library and require parental permission for the student to check them out, unless, of course, it's part of an AP curriculum that requires parental permission to take in the first place or the student is 18 years old. Because if a student is old enough to go to war, old enough to purchase a firearm, and old enough to vote, then they are certainly old enough to decide what to read. When I woke up this morning, America was still, for the time being, a democratic republic. The First Amendment in the Bill of Rights guarantees freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom to peacefully gather and air grievances against the government, freedom of and from the government's selection of religion for a country. But do you know what countries ban books? Iran, Iraq, North Korea, China, Russia, and of course, Nazi Germany. Banning books is a slippery slope, and that slope heads directly away from democracy. Thank you.
Jan Snovel.
I'm sorry, I wrote something, but I was going to do it at the end. No, I can just read it. Okay. The mission, I read the mission statement for Perkyomen Valley School District. I'm Jan Snovel. I'm from Collegeville. My daughter went to school here. I'm a retired educator and administrator. The mission statement says that it's to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. Our school board should be working to help support marginalized communities and students, not attacking them. The First Amendment protects students' rights to receive and express ideas. It prohibits removal of books from libraries based on either viewpoint or content discrimination. Restricting information and discouraging freedom of thought through censorship undermines the primary function of education, which is teaching students to think for themselves. Parents can play a role in shaping their children's reading habits by talking to them about materials they're interested in and reading. As a retired teacher and administrator, I stand opposed to censorship through book banning and all efforts to coerce beliefs, suppress banning and all efforts to coerce beliefs, suppress opinion, or punish those who do not conform with others' beliefs. The Perkyomen Valley School Board cannot afford to create policies that are designed to silence and marginalize any group of students. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Klett Penlin?
Klett Penlin, Skippeck Township. Once again, our nation is faced with a tragic insidious school shooting. And who was it that put a stop to it? Trained armed professionals, not social workers, not guidance counselors. Ideally, we should not be faced with such abhorrent actions against humanity, but this is the world that we are in today. So we need practical solutions for the today that we are living in. Ongoing efforts should continue to address root causes of why one human would target our most vulnerable in society. But as a community, we must be willing to take action in our now to protect our children and the educators dedicating their time and energy to the public school system. While very sad that this is necessary, I'm here, I am speaking here tonight to show you that there are those in this community who support having armed, trained resources on-site at PV schools. Perhaps one day, in the not-too-distant future, this type of evil will be gone from this planet, but as has been proven over the last 12 months, we are not there yet. As a taxpayer to the PV School District, you have my support to spend money for an SPO to protect the children and educators in our community. And speaking of protecting the children, I ask that you continue with the process of screening and removing from the shelves and school databases any books with pornographic or age-inappropriate content. I can't even believe that this needs to be said. Age-inappropriate and sexually explicit content does not belong on any of the shelves in public school systems. I don't care who the author or illustrators are or what group they identify with. We need to protect our children from all inappropriate material in a public school library. If these books are so important for your children to have access to, go buy it for them, or they can use their Amazon account from their smartphones, and these books are not banned or illegal, just keep them out of the schools. Get back to teaching, reading, writing, math, music, and things that our students need to know to be functioning in our society. Thank you.
Rias? No, I'll call the next person, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Rias Shringana? Ria? Sorry. Ria.
Hello, my name is Ria Shringari, and I'm from Trap Borough, and I am the senior class treasurer, and I've been a student at PV since kindergarten. Our three social workers and limited counselors in the district are simply not enough to take on the caseload of our diverse 5,119 students. The legislative decision to approach the creation of seven school police officers beginning with the next school year is not a justifiable approach to protecting our kids and teachers. Having SPOs responding to crisis situations can become deadly or feel threatening, and these community-focused approaches would be most effective with trained mental health professionals rather than police officers. Police are trained to maintain public order and enforce law, and they are not and never will be substitutes for culturally competent social workers and mental health professionals. Even having the option of employing police officers in our district disturbs me greatly because what our students need is community resources, compassion, and people they can trust to understand our delicate feelings and emotions. I know from personal experience that the last thing any suicidal, traumatized, or actively distressed person wants is law enforcement to confront them when emotions are high. We need more trained mental health professionals and more compassion for our students, more support for our counselors, and more accessibility to resources. I'll leave with this. As a survivor of suicide myself, I know how desperate young people are for adults they can depend on. The actions of this school board have not reflected that. Do better, please. For the very reasons we are all here today, the future of the youth. Thank you.
Valerie Drury? Valerie Drury?
Valerie Drury, Skippeck Township. I want to clear something up as far as any confusion. With the majority of the books in question, they are books in the high school. They are not part of required classes to graduate, and parents do have a choice to have their children opt out. They don't have to see them. Also, folks keep saying they don't want to ban the books. I heard that. Problem is, the definition of the word "ban" is to remove or not allow. So yes, it's banning books. I heard some comments from the community members that they want to get back to the basics of reading, writing, arithmetic. We heard that tonight. So let's think about that. Back to the basics. What does that look like? No arts, no music, no drama, no sports, no robotic, no chess club, no power packs, no counselors. We're not living in a basic time. Therefore, our children should not be offered a basic education. Speaking of basic, we're not Central Buck School District, nor are we Moms for Liberty. Therefore, their ideology and their policy are not ours. I don't care about Central Buck's. I pay taxes to PV, and that's where my children go. We are PV. We are independent in our thoughts and actions. We saw that with our students today. PV is committed and dedicated, and our legacy is rich. We are leaders. We are PV Strong, not anybody else.
Alicia Rosas? Alicia Rosas?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Alicia Rosas, and I live in Skippeck. So many important issues that have been talked about tonight. I wanted to come back to one that Wade brought up earlier, which is about Spanish in school. So I don't think it's a great idea to back out of Spanish for the elementary school, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that. So by way of my background, because I don't know many of you, I have a bachelor's degree in Japanese and French, and proficient in Spanish, and have lived overseas for a combined five years of my life in Japan, Spain, Mexico, both as a student and as a working adult. I've learned languages before the age of 18 and later in my 40s, and can speak from experience about the difference that my brain processed in language acquisition. There's much research on the benefits of language, learning a second language, and learning it at a young age. First, early second language learning is best done the younger you are, preferably before the age of 10. That's because your brain's more elastic and has not yet stopped the intrinsic development of language. It's during this period that the foundations of thinking, language, and other characteristics are laid down. After this stage of development, the windows close, and you can still learn languages at a later age, but it's less wired into the brain. Second, for those who say, well, why should I learn another language, or why should my kid learn another language because they never plan or I never plan to have them out of the country, or everyone else speaks English. You should understand that learning a language isn't just about the language, it's about learning about culture and how to understand people who are different than you are. It's an important driver of empathy and understanding the world around you, even if you never travel outside of the U.S. And by the way, who can predict where any child is going to go? Third, studying another language also makes you a better student of English and a better reader. English is on the West Germanic Anglo-Phrysinian branch of the language tree, while Spanish is on the Romance branch derived from Latin. Because so much vocabulary comes from Latin, having a connection through Spanish is a great way to expand your English vocabulary. Finally, if you speak another language, it opens many future job opportunities and creates competitive advantages for our children. Monolingualism is exclusively an American situation. Children in almost every other country in the world are raised with exposure to more than one language, sometimes three or four. Don't we want our kids to be competitive and not fall behind the rest of the world? So how can we make Spanish core to the elementary curriculum? I empathize with all the demands on time, but other schools have figured it out. This deserves much more study instead of abandoning it. My exposure to different languages and cultures absolutely shaped my worldview for the better and gave me specific opportunities for advancement in my career and has enriched my life without a doubt. I'm a strong supporter of adding more Spanish language to the curriculum in the elementary school. Thank you.
Nathan Michael D. Dominik? Nathan?
My name's Nathan D. Dominik. I am an 11th grade student here. "You matter" is a phrase every child wants to hear. Unfortunately, the Central York School District doesn't want children to hear this from Christian Robinson's picture book entitled "You Matter." The crime of the book was telling children they have value, whether young or old. I'm sure the committee present may be curious as to why this book ban was mentioned. After all, it was not in Perkyomen Valley School District. It's my personal belief that everyone matters, no matter who or what you are. This is why I'm against banning books under the guise of banning pornography. Young or old, rich or poor, author or reader, I believe you matter and your voice should be heard. I also believe that getting into political trends like book bans can easily lead to disaster. "Fun Home" by Alison Bechdel has been a popular ban across the nation, including Perkyomen Valley, where she retells her childhood journey. It is not a book about sex. The author's purpose is not to spread pornography to children, but rather tell her story. As per Cornell University, the legal definition of sex in explicit material means an audio recording, a film or video recording, or a periodical with visual descriptions produced in any medium, the dominant theme of which depicts or describes nudity, including sexual or excretory activities or organs in a leviaceous way. The dominant theme of the content must be pornographic to be sexually explicit. There is no mention of sexual orientation, racial identity, gender identity, or any of the like. "You Matter" has none of this content and has become a victim of this modern-day witch hunt. The argument presented is, is if sex isn't present within literature, it is pornographic. This notion is misguided. Sex is a physiological human necessity, and here we are trying to conceal reality so it makes us feel better. Sex is a driving force of many great pieces of classical literature, such as 1984, The Odyssey, The Iliad, and many other defining works of Western art. I would like to touch on 1984 especially, the book preaching about the evils of censorship and control, and one that's been repeatedly banned throughout its publication history. How ironic. When we ban books, what we're doing is silencing speech we disagree with. Nobody ever banned books out of an earnest effort to protect their community from heart. It's historically been done to protect the interests of a particular group. But I'm not here to talk about the specific evils of the school board and its agenda. I want to discuss the trend and what it means for my generation's future, what it means for Perkyomen Valley students, and the message it sends to the community. And the trend is that the school board, whose purpose is to encourage the education of children, have politicized education. If we wish to encourage the learning of our students, then I believe we should let authors speak to their audiences. I am not for pornography in the hands of young children. I am for freedom of speech and expression. I am for the expression of both the verbal and written word, and I am for educating and preparing children for adulthood. Thank you. That's all.
Kathy LaSage? Kathy LaSage?
Good evening. I'm Kathy LaSage of Skippeck Township. I have two students here at the high school. I wanted to say this evening how proud I am of all the students who used their First Amendment rights today to defend their First Amendment rights and protest book bans. We've had people at past meetings talk about parents' rights, but students have rights too, to academic and intellectual freedom. We do not own our children. They're not possessions. They have the right to think for themselves. My 12th grader, and many other seniors, and even some juniors are 18 years old. This school district is legally obligated to provide an education to some students up to 21 years old. These are not minors. They can vote, they can get married, they can join the United States military and lay down their lives for this country in defense of their First Amendment rights and all of our rights. If this public school district takes steps to restrict their access to books paid for with tax dollars, that is an infringement of these students' First Amendment rights. Period. Full stop. The current policy allows parents to choose to opt their own minor children out of access to books they personally take issue with. They have no right to challenge book access for all students. Thank you.
Erin Logan? Erin Logan? Okay. Lee and Ellen Malloy?
Good evening. My name is actually just Ellen Price-Malloy. My husband, I'm speaking for both of us, I hope. Maybe not. First of all, I want to say there's been some excellent speakers both ways, with good thinking. I'm on the left. Sadly, more police and more banning of books and all sorts of things is not the answer to the social ills plaguing America today. We have so much hate, we have so much anger, and the only way is through education, through knowledge. Banning books is ignorance. It takes away the education. And yes, it is restricting anybody's rights, and I totally agree. You have no right to ban books. You want to ban something? Ban assault rifles. You want to ban something? Ban guns. You want to ban something? Ban the violent games that these kids are watching. Ban the violent TV shows in your own home. That you can do. That is your right. But we all should be banning assault rifles because our children should be safe in every school, and that is the big crime. I belong to an organization, a friend of mine started.
Hold on a second.
Pardon?
Hold on one second, please. We'll stop your time. Please don't interrupt the speaker at all. No comments on what the speaker's talking about, please. Go ahead.
All right, I'm going to come back to the coalition that I am, but research has also proven that music and the arts are good for brain development, brain growth, and emotional development. It can soothe the savage beast. We cannot cut those out. We have to increase them. And as far as language goes, there's been research for 30 or 40 years showing when a baby's born, they have millions of brain cells, and most of those die out. But when there's another language or two introduced, brain cells are saved. Those children with multi-language's actually have better chances at a higher education. They have more learning power than the other children. So we can't, let's not, you know, hurt our children. My granddaughter is in Evergreen, and we were pleased to get out of North Penn, and now I'm very disappointed. Anyway, I am part of a Coalition for Racial Equity and Social Justice, and we meet on Zoom. And the idea is to have a safe place for people to learn about bullying, learning about microaggression. And basically, to me, banning is a form of microaggression. And if you're not sure, look it up. Thank you.
Luke Pepper? Luke Pepper?
Good evening. Luke Pepper from Perkyomen Township. I'm here to address the school policing. One of the things when I first heard this was, you know, guns in the schools, I was worried. I think we can personally train these officers to be facilitators of solutions rather than just police officers. I think we can do both. I mean, one lady said we should just do the police, we don't have to do more people coming in for mental health. We could do both. It solves both problems. One of my concerns is I don't trust what's going to happen based on how this board is composed. We have five people in the majority who vote for every single time on big-time policy decisions. This is a big-time policy decision. $1.6 million is going to be expended, and we're rushing it through. I want to know, and this may sound ridiculous, but I'm going to say it. I want to know whether or not the majority of the board are going to use this, police phones. force to crush dissent, to intimidate students, and intimidate other board members. There's been zero respect shown to the minority. And for, for people who purport to be Christians, I don't know what to say other than, number one, we have an establishment clause that prevents you bringing your religious views to bear on a public institution. Number one. And I don't even understand who the Christ you're talking about is. Because I was raised that Christ ran to the poor. He ran to the lepers. He was there to help the least of us, not to make someone richer. So before I came here today, someone said to me, Luke, what do you think the problem is? Is it right wing Christians? Is it left wing Christians? And I responded very bluntly, it's pretend Christians. Every single person here who purports to be a Christian is made in the image of Christ. That over the 22,000 denominations of Christianity, that is universally true. Gays, lesbians, blacks, Latinos, people who don't speak English, poor people, all in the image of Christ. If you're going to pretend to be Christians and pass book banning and bring guns into, do God's will, you better know who God is, know who Christ is, and do it the right way. I did not consent to you using, to bring in your religion into this board. Many people behind me didn't consent to you bringing a religion into this board. Stop pretending to be Christians and tell the truth about what you really want to do. You want to marginalize people for the sake of your own political agenda. You bastardize God to get your agenda forward.
Does anyone else like to speak?
I think, I forget my name. I'm getting a pretty bad guess of my name, but I didn't hear it.
What's your name?
Erin Logan.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, let Mr. Seibel go first, and then you can go. Mr. Seibel?
Hi, my name is Christian Seibel. I'm from Collegeville. I'm a student at the high school. I'm not going to talk on book banning because every single person here knows my opinion on that topic. If you don't, go back to the last meeting, you can listen to it. I want to talk about the situation that's occurring with the Spanish program at the elementary school. It's my understanding that that's being planned to be taken out of our elementary school curriculum, and I think that's a very foolish decision. As a student who's gone here since elementary school, I have seen every level of the Spanish program, from elementary school to the AP Spanish class that I'm in right now. I've had the opportunity to serve as a translator in Puerto Rico on a medical trip. I've had the opportunity to serve as a world language mentorship program mentor with, with Dr. Russell and Senora Holman at the high school. And I am, I am a firm believer that being bilingual at this stage of my life has, has made opportunities available and made my life better. Furthermore, I think it's made my education better because I think it's improved my ability to communicate ideas, not just in English, but in Spanish. And I think that it's improved my development on an academic level. I came here in ninth grade. I remember this. I remember standing here, because it's one of the first board meetings I ever spoke at, on the idea to pare back the Spanish program in the elementary school, change it, how frequently it was attended by our students. And I remember being so confused that the board was planning on taking this out because it was such a big part of my elementary school experience. Then I remember speaking on the fact that these programs encourage development of language, language acquisition. It improves your ability to learn a language in secondary education, post-secondary education, whether it be French, Spanish, whatever, all these languages. It's easier to develop more languages when you've gotten two under your belt. It's concerning me that after that, we're still planning on removing more. I think you're going to lose a lot of students from the language programs. A lot of these colleges want two years of a language in high school. Why would we decide that they start later if it's going to be easier for them to get a head start in elementary school? It just seems, it's very frustrating for me to watch. And I don't understand why this action would be taken. And if you guys can come out with data that shows that this is completely pointless, or this is not worth our time in the elementary schools, I'd love to see it, but I really don't think that data exists. I think that it's a very important program, and I think we need to ensure that we're protecting it in every level of education. Thank you.
My name is Erin Logan, and I am a 20-year resident of Collegeville. I'm here this evening as both a parent and veteran educator with concerns regarding the restriction of books in the library and those chosen by faculty. I'll begin by saying that nothing prepares you for how scary it is to be a parent. There are no shortcuts or apps that let your children cruise through life unskated, and yet we, as parents, try and achieve just that. We sign them up for the right clubs, read countless bedtime books, apply every internet safety app available, and coach every sport that they play. In reality, those are far too short sighted of our efforts. What happens when we can't be there? What happens when they go to college and their roommate is the antithesis of every single value we've instilled in our kids? Do they leave school? Of course not. What happens when their boss, responsible for their evaluations and promotions, resents everything your child represents? Do they ask for a transfer and uproot their family because someone different than them is in their daily orbit? I certainly hope not. No, we raise our children to be part of a global society. We let them know that the world is full of people of different religions, races, genders, and economic statuses. Why? Because the most powerful companies in the world are using DEI as a means of recruiting. And while our generation may not be interested in diversity, those entering the workforce need it as a basic employment soft skill. So how do we accomplish this when a school district where 82% of the population looks alike? We do it with critical thinking skills that they get from reading. We trust the professionals who've dedicated their entire lives to education, the ones who've actually spent years writing curriculum, aligning it with state standards, and revising it to meet the intellectual, social, and emotional needs of our students. The disrespectful undermining of educators through book revision costs this district upwards of $1,000 per challenge, bleeding the district of valuable tax dollars. And it would end. When do we say enough? As it stands, nobody questions Stephen King novels with chapter-long orgies of preteens. No one's questioning mine comp resting on the bookshelves or Bible, books of the Bible oh one. How about the sexuality in Judy Blooms Forever or the ever-popular Twilight Breaking Dawn? Does Anne Frank make the list, but not Eli Vizel's Night? In the words of Ray Bradbury, "Do you ever read any of the books you burn?" Or in this case, "ban"? Rather than placing, placating to the parents who demand removal of offensive books, let's compromise. Have them sign a release for their child to opt out of the district library. Let them restrict their child, not the entire student body. If they don't know offensive books, check out Access PA Power Library. Do the research. It's called parenting. It's exhausting, messy, and there are no shortcuts. If we continue to allow educators to assume, non educators to assume instructional duties of our highly qualified staff, they will continue to leave in droves. Is that the legacy this board wants to leave behind? I would hope not.
Would anyone, would anyone else like an opportunity to speak? Yeah.
It clicked I was speaking.
What's this?
It did click that I was speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Durstein, and I am the librarian at South Elementary School. I'm the librarian who knowingly selected and ordered I Am Not a Girl for the South Library. You may have seen this book listed as a challenged book in Dr. Russell's last communication. Some screenshots were recently shared with me on a page on a social media where people were questioning why, why is this book in an elementary library? I'm here to share with you why this book is in our library. First, let me tell you about my students. I currently have a student who has diabetes. She likes to check books out about diabetes. I formerly had a student who had alopecia. I did not have any books with characters or about alopecia, so the parents donated books for our library. I cannot keep the Mindy Kaling series on my shelves as my Asian-American students and their friends love it. I have students that are football fans, and they cannot get enough books about football. In 2020, our library was given a grant to purchase diversity books for our library. At the same time, I received a catalog from one of our library book vendors that focused on diversity books. This book was in the catalog. Also, at the same time, I had a student who changed their name from a female name to a gender-neutral name. I looked at my students, and I looked at the South Elementary collection, and I thought, in what areas am I missing a book? Which students of mine would not be able to find a book with a character like them in their own school library? And those were the students I focused on. We have books about multiracial families, families of different ethnicities and religions, characters who are disabled, divorced parent families, bilingual characters, books with characters who are, who are autistic, books with dogs that talk and superheroes in underwear. But I did not have a book for my student who didn't feel comfortable in their own skin. At that time, I was worried that the student's parent would say to me, why don't you have a book for my student in your library? I never imagined someone would say, how dare you have that book in your school library? I've never read the book aloud to a class. The book's not even, not on display. In fact, the book has only been checked out one time. But I feel better knowing that it is there for a child if they need it. Although this book was on a list of books described as sexually explicit, there was no reference to sex or sexual acts other than gender. I would like to read two pages that is causing all this fuss. It's about a child named Hannah. Beth comes over to trick or treat. "How come you get to dress like a boy?", I grumble. She shrugs. "My mom says I used to be a tomboy too." "What's a tomboy? A girl who likes boyish stuff?" "Oh, that's not me." "I'm not a girl," I tell her. Beth looks confused. "I'm not a girl," I say again, taking out my sword. Beth draws her sword too. "Yes, you are." "No, I'm not." "Nobody seems to hear me," so I try to show them what I mean. "Time to reapply your sunscreen," Hannah Dad calls. "Hannah Grace," says, confused. "You thought you were a boy," Jake says. "I am a boy," I insist. "No one believes me, though." "We believe you," Grace says, nodding. "A mom's son." "You're, you're like our cousin. Our family thought she was, he was a boy, but she's actually a girl," Jake says. "She's transgender." I like to close with, the South Library has I Am Not a Girl because I not only care about my students with diabetes, my students with alopecia, my Asian-American students, and my football fans. I care about each and every one of my students, and that is why, why I Am Not a Girl is in the South Library. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Debbie Leonetti, Skippak. I didn't have a prepared speech tonight because I really wasn't sure what I was going to talk about, but I just wanted to say to everybody here, I think we have more in common than everybody wants to talk about. We want our kids safe. I think we all can agree on that. We want the kids safe in school. So looking at having police officers at the school, I don't think there's a problem with that. Kids go, they're used to seeing police officers. You go to a concert, you go to a sporting event, there's police officers there. They know how to use a gun. Assault rifles are also illegal. That's the wrong term. Second of all, I think we could use more guidance counselors in our schools, and I do agree with the student that spoke before. We could spend some money on things like that so that we don't have these problems. We have a culture problem in this country, guys. We need to do better for our kids. We need to start teaching them better values, Christian values. And as far as being a Christian and showing those books, I think if you brought some of those books that we're talking about to church, I don't think your pastors would want to read them. I did a deep dive on that list that came out from Barbara Russell, and I was horrified by the stuff that I saw. The graphic novels, do people know what a graphic novel is?
Please don't interrupt the speaker.
It's a, it's a comic book, basically. It's done in drawings. And if you look at those drawings, it's sexually explicit, and I don't think it has any place in our school district. My tax dollars, I don't want them paying for that as well. And if a parent wants their kids to see that, do it on your own time. In school, we need to learn. I agree with the student talking about Spanish. We should have Spanish in the schools. It's very important for kids to learn how to speak Spanish and other languages when they're young. That's when they're little sponges, they pick it up. It's important for the world that everybody is speaking different languages. It helps you learn about cultures and things like that. So I think, everybody, we have a lot more in common here than we want to admit, and I think the safety of our kids is really important. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Shona McGee, Skippak. I'm going to agree with you. We are having a culture issue, but I also want to remind you.
Real quick, everything's got to go this way.
Okay. I want to remind everybody here that we are a pluralistic nation. Not everyone here is Christian. There are Muslim, there are Hindu, there are Jewish, and a multitude of other religions in this world. What about them? Where is equity and inclusion? That's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Go ahead, Joe.
My name is Eric Smith. I'm from Schwanxville. I also didn't really plan to speak tonight, but hearing what a lot of parents have been saying, I do want to say that I'm kind of tired of it. A lot of what parents are saying is that students shouldn't be seeing explicit content. But the book that the librarian, that South librarian read was not explicit. I am a transgender student, and if I had read that book when I was in elementary school, I would have been a lot happier. I have lived with depression almost my entire life, and I didn't know where most of it came from. Most of it came from not having the vocabulary, not being able to understand who I was. There's a lot of argument about indoctrination, that books are teaching kids to be transgender. They're not. I have always been trans. I have never been a man. I just never had the words to express it until I started meeting peers in person and online, so I read books and saw TV shows with people like me. Representation matters because it, it lets us learn that we're not abnormal, we're not freaks, we are people. It's not abnormal to be transgender, it's just something people are. And the parents complaining about sexually explicit images in books, we're not five. We, and as the one student, whose name I forget in the suit, pointed out, most of those books are not about the sex. Most of those books feature sex, yes, but we've had health class. We know what that is. These are books for the high school. These aren't, we aren't small children, as has been pointed out. Many of us are adults. And as has been pointed out, if you don't want your child to read the book, you can do paperwork and they won't read the book. But for the people who need to know who they are, who like hearing voices of people like them, it's important. I remember, I forget the title of the book, but one book on a lot of banned lists was a graphic novel about someone who had survived sexual assault. I believe it was on ours. That book had sexually explicit images, but that book isn't about sex, it's about surviving assault. That book is important because there may be someone in this school who has survived that, who wants to learn that they aren't alone. Representation matters because being a minority can be so lonely. Stop trying to teach kids that they're alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Evan? You'll go after Evan, okay? Yeah, you'll go after Evan. Thank you.
Evan Kenny, Skippak Town District, junior class. I would like to briefly talk about the book issue, which I would not plan on covering tonight, but I would like to shout out the students today who participated in the student walkout, as I believe they showed much bravery in expressing their First Amendment right. And I would also like to note that it is very telling to me that the administrations, administrators who spoke today, who pick out the books, and the students who read the book all seem to have a concurrent opinion towards the policy. But instead, I would like to focus on the police issue briefly, as I was a student selected to go observe the Springford Police Force, and I saw a lot of benefits there. I think that it can, it works for Springford, but I also think that it was a 10-year program for Springford, and the police there provide a lot more than just security. They help do social work within the school, and all the students seem to respect them. So as the, as the policy currently is, I believe proposing seven police officers, I think that this might be taking things a little too quickly, as I think that sometimes we see police programs, even for school see police programs, even for school shootings, that don't work. I mean, Udali had a police officer located in the school, and that also did not go well at all, clearly. So I think if we are to propose and insert this thing into our school, which I think could potentially be beneficial towards our students, I think we should do it more slowly, maybe starting with two to three police officers, and making sure we get the right people first so we can build up a good culture and make sure our students feel comfortable and the police are doing what truly matters, rather than just security, which while important is not what only impacts our students, as mental health and other issues are very important. Thank you.
I'd first like to begin by saying I did not plan to speak tonight. However, after seeing the actions of my peers, I've been emboldened to speak, so you'll have to forgive me if it's a bit off the cuff. In ninth grade, in what is called US Modern History Class, I'm not sure if the name was changed recently, I learned about Vietnam and the horrors that occurred there. I learned about the chemical weapons and their effects of World War I, of shell shock. In 10th grade, I read Eli Wiesel's Night. I learned of the more intricate horrors that occurred during the Holocaust. In 11th grade, I learned about the invasion of Afghanistan. I learned about the things that we did to that country. And so, to me, the idea that sex, blood, violence somehow makes a book less valuable or less appropriate to students is laughable. It's an important facet of life that should be addressed as soon as we are addressing violence. This is not middle school, this is not elementary school, it's not preschool. This is a high school. We are aware of the things that are happening. In fact, oftentimes, I'll leave lunch to see military recruiters in the hall. Is that acceptable? Frankly, I think it sort of is. Bit borderline there. And so, I'd like to make the point that if your concern is that it is inappropriate, then you'd have to address the whole course, and frankly, I think that's a bit laughable as well. As for, I'm aware, there may be concerns that maybe reading these books may somehow convert someone. Well, I mean, I'm pretty sure I'm in an argument against that. I'm a man. I've been born a man. I've always been comfortable as a man. And reading some book would not make me doubt that. And so frankly, if your concern is that your kids are somehow going to come out to you as a different gender because of a book, I implore you to reevaluate yourself. Thank you.
Mike Sheridan, Skipack Township resident since 1980. My wife and I raised four children in this township, and we have 15 grandchildren that we focus on very intently. It is not surprising that 15-year-olds, 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds embrace changes in the culture. That's what youngsters do. Many of us did it when we were their age. Many of those changes are not significant. Is your hair long? Is it short? Is it middle length? Do you get an Afro? Don't get an Afro? That doesn't go to the heart of the matter. But there are changes that are significant. Some of those significant changes are great. Having seen the civil rights movement in the 60s, I certainly realize that. America before the 60s, America after the 60s. But some changes are harmful or have the potential to be harmful. And that's where responsible parents and a responsible school board comes into play. It's the job of the school board and the job of the responsible parent to identify which changes in the culture go to the core of things. And some of those changes that go to the core of things are good, but it's also the job to identify the changes that go to the core that are harmful. And I want to applaud those on this school board who have focused and brought attention on changes happening to our culture reflected in this school district that I think are harmful. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Aspen Bradley. I'm from Skipack Township. I'm in the high school as a junior. Many of you might recognize me from the news today, but I didn't prepare anything. I didn't know if I was actually coming to the meeting tonight, just because today was very important, very draining mentally. But one of the things that I have to talk about is an opening that I learned that is a line from The Interpercussion, which is very powerful. I might not have the words exactly, but it's around there. Readers live a thousand lives. Those who never read live only one. And to tie that into another one that my mom told me recently, I'm not sure where she got it from, but books can either be a mirror, or they can be a window into other people's lives. So allowing people to have access to as many different perspectives and narratives as possible only allows people to understand the world around them more and their peers. One of the good examples of that is my sister, who graduated, I think, two years ago in PV. She is one of the smartest people and most kind and most empathetic, most understanding people I've ever met. And we were having some good conversations about this whole topic this past weekend. One of the things that she brought up is, while talking with my mom in the car, and I was there present also, is how people keep talking about a liberal and a conservative mindset. And there is not really one in education, except for the fact that if you go to the core words, conservative means to conserve. Why would you want to limit knowledge from people? All that does historically is hurt people because you don't trust people with knowing what's out there. If you are a parent, you will expose, a good parent, you will expose your children to as many truths in the world as possible. Not sugarcoating it, putting your beliefs on there. I am very fortunate to have family who are very eclectic. I know a lot of the world, some good things and some things that are bad, but that's the truth of the world. So in summary, just why would you want to hurt children by not letting them know what's out there? Because not knowing what's out there just creates fear, it creates stigmas, it creates paranoia, it creates untrustworthiness of your peers and those around you. All it does is hurt the world. Thank you.
I'm going to feed off of my teammate. I am Melissa Overholser. I am a parent of two PV graduates. I am a taxpayer, and I am one of the newer librarians on the staff in the district. I am the Swansville Librarian. I have sat at these board meetings, committee meetings, and they have been emotional, they have been hurtful. But what I keep reminding myself is that as the librarian in one of our elementary schools, my job is to provide books for my students to see themselves, to see their lives, and to see the world around them. I keep hearing changes, our lives, our world has changed. It has. If I went back to elementary school, I would not have found books in my library that had alcoholic parents or parents that were divorced, or parents that were remarried, because that wasn't part of the time then. Just like there's books now that are different than what we have grown up with, but they are part of our students' world and our students' lives. When my two children walked out of this school district, off to college, they were better because they went to PV, and they were exposed to other people's lives than just their bubble. That's what the libraries are about and the books that are there, and it's an option for the kids to take those books out. I do not tell my students they have to take something. It's their choice, but I want the option there for them to find something that is important to them. So just keep that in mind as you are making these decisions down the road. Thank you.
I really did have something prepared tonight, but I decided to not talk about it. I am going to be 75 in May, and my first introduction to a gay individual was my girlfriend who gave me a book, told me to read it. I read it, I asked her some questions. It was about a young boy whose father never had time for him, mistreated the mother, ran around on her, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it turned out that the man who wrote the book was her uncle, and he was the boy in the story. Then, as I grew older in high school, my girlfriend and I were going to go to the prom, and she couldn't go to the prom because her boyfriend was caught in an affair with a guy. Okay. So I've done research, and I have friends who actually, I have two lesbian friends in particular, but one, we almost had a situation in our family. I have never looked down on them, I have never treated them any differently than anybody else I have met. What I do think is that the culture that we are going into, we are grooming these children, and this has become the problem. Again, I'm going to be 75, and I've never seen or heard of the dissension and the ugliness. I mean, sorry, but if anybody criticizes Christianity one more time, we don't call you people Satanists, but you don't believe in God. It's no big, it's your choice. But you have every single book in this school that most of society considers pornographic, but you won't have, do you have a Bible in the Christian section? Right. Exactly. It's a public school.
Please don't interrupt the speaker.
And we pay taxes, too. The point is, if you really have raised children, you know to tell a 13-year-old, "I don't want you reading that book in that library," that's the first book they're going to want to read. But yet, if you want your children exposed to all this, or if they need it, you have bookstores, you have Amazon, you could get it the next day. So the idea that there is such arguments going back and forth shows that this really is a political agenda. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, Allison Peterson, Trap. I want every single board member and administrator at this table tonight, at the end of this meeting, to denounce any statements that are made about grooming children. It is ridiculous, and if you do not speak out against it, you are part of the problem. It is hurtful. I have a husband that teaches in this school district. I am president of the foundation. We do nothing but support the professionals. And I'm sorry I'm emotional, but this is ridiculous. These are professional people working in this building. They do nothing but care about your children every day. They have plans in place, if a shooter comes in this building, to protect your children. And people are here calling them out for grooming children about some so-called culture? It's complete ridiculousness, and it's up to all of you to call it out. And if you don't, then there's bigger issues here, whether that's a political agenda or whatever it is, but it's ridiculous. And if you do not call it out tonight, you are part of the problem, so I expect to hear from every one of you at the end of this meeting.
I'm going to make this quick. I just want to, oh, I'm Heidi Brown from Lower Frederick. And I just want to make something clear, too. I know there was a mention of the board being 5-4, and I believe that the community voted on that, if I'm not mistaken, so that means that you guys had elected votes to be that 5-4. So you're the voice of our majority of our community. And I want to thank you for the job that you're doing and trying to protect our children. You need to keep fighting for them. It is, well, and I'm a real Christian, okay? So I do, and I believe our children are blessings. And we need to protect them by all measures, whether we need armed police in our school. I mean, we've all seen the news. I mean, it's, time is an essence here. We need to get to work. We can't keep dragging this out to talk about it. We need to take action. The same with these books. Porn is porn, no matter how you present it or wrap it up. It is what it is. We have a captive audience here. That is not the place for these books. If your child needs a book like that and you want to discuss it with them and read it with them, take them to a public library. Let them check it out. I can assure you that younger children will get their eyes on those books, whether it's from an older sibling. I've seen it. I've worked at the elementary level, okay? It happens. Let's not be fooled by that. We are not banning books. That is not the right term. We are not burning them, we're not banning them. They are welcome in a public library. You can order them on Amazon. And I feel like a parent, you need to sit and discuss with your child the books that they are reading with this kind of content. We, come on, we need to get some common sense back here. This is ridiculous. I, you know, like I said, I love all children.
Ms. Brown, yep.
Okay. We need to really take a hard look at this. But bottom line, I want to thank the board for fighting for our children. Thank you.
I'm Danielle Stone. I'm from Skipack, and I'm a senior at the high school. I'm an AP Literature student, and I'm going to college for writing, and in a few weeks, I'll be doing my senior internship at the Skipack Library. I'm an avid reader of books like 1984 and Fahrenheit 451 that teaches us the dangers of getting rid of books, so I think I should be one to talk about this. There's a reason why we discuss themes of sex, sexuality, gender, and race in our classes. An ignorant student is an unprepared student. The themes and messages in books are taught for a reason. It's important for everyone to be able to look into a book and identify what is truly being said behind it. If you believe that books that contain your description of pornography will harm our students, will corrupt their minds, then what needs to happen isn't getting rid of these books, it's teaching them how to read them critically. I want you to once again take a look at what your children are reading. Is it really the books that are the problem, or is it the bigoted mindsets that we are teaching our children? I am gay, I am Jewish, I suffer from mental illness, and I'm not going away just because you don't want to see me. You cannot erase me from your reality just because you get rid of me from the library. It's time to start acknowledging our students and not trying to send them away to the camps for who they are. Let us read our books.
Okay. Student Leazon's report.
Thank you. Arshia Haddego. We thought this would go quicker. Sorry, whatever. So, my name is Matt Shaffer, you probably know that. I got a couple things to touch on tonight, and I will end sort of touching on Evan Kenny's point about the Springford trip. I was also on that, so I'll touch on that in a little bit. First, I want to start with sports. It's been a while since I've spoken to you about sports. The last time we talked, our girls' basketball team, I know it's April when we're talking about girls' basketball, they were in the district tournament, I'm sorry, they were in the state tournament. in the state tournament. Unfortunately, they lost to Archbishop Carroll. It was a heartbreaking game over at Plymouth White Marsh. Nonetheless, we're extremely proud. It's a historic team, Pac champions, district champions. We could not be more proud of those girls. To our senior, senior, singular, Ellis Stein, we wish her a lot of luck in the future, and to all the girls returning, we hope for an even better season next year. And with that, spring sports started three weeks ago in the midst of the girls' basketball season, and all of our spring sports teams are looking really healthy, looking really good. Our girls' lacrosse senior night is going on right now, which I'm going to bop over to if I can catch the tail end of it. So everybody is doing very well, putting in a lot of work, very proud of them. If you didn't get a chance to see our musical, that's upsetting. It was a phenomenal musical, Mean Girls, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. That was one of the most funny three and a half, three hours, three and a half hours of my life. I'm very happy I went. It was awesome. I'm an athlete, and I thought I knew what hard work looked like, but like, what those guys do is so much more hard work than I could ever anticipate. What they do, they're here when we get here, and they're gone when we're...or they're still here when we leave. So shout out to everybody involved in that, Mr. Malletts for putting it on. It's just an absolutely phenomenal program that I can't wait to see flourish in the future. Speaking of future programs here, let's talk about robots. We had a robotics competition this last weekend, and our team did phenomenal. They got eighth out of 30 teams, made the playoffs, and despite a loss in the semifinals, they did receive the gracious professionalism award, which is an award, you know, we take definitely. I think it very well reflects our values and morals here at Perkyon Valley. So that's our student report. I will now touch on the trip we took to Springford. So it was last week, a group of students, including myself, Mr. Kenny, Dr. Russell, and Dr. Moss, took a trip over to Springford. We met with their school police officers, we met with some of their students, we met with their principals, and I think a lot of questions were answered. A lot of questions we had going into it were answered. There's still questions moving forward, definitely, not in doubt of that, but I think it was a very healthy conversation, a lot of reassuring factors. One thing I believe a lot of the students thought going into it was they're just police officers, but what came out of that, at least I believe, is we learned that they're community pillars. The one gentleman says he brings his guitar every so often, and he goes and plays to the music classes, and he teaches about forensics, and the other teachers, or the other police officers sing "Happy Birthday," and they hand out lollipops, and they're role models to their students. And I think that's something that really could suit Perkyon Valley, because in my experience, all the adults here have been phenomenal role models. So there's definitely work to do, definitely questions to be answered, but I will say, from an inside perspective and from the students, I can't speak for all of them, but I hope I can speak for most of them, it was a great conversation. I can't wait to work with them in the future, trying to iron out details, and I just wanted to give light on what the students have been doing recently, and that's what we got. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No president's report, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. So this evening, I would like to touch upon five topics. You can see them here. I'm going to keep us moving along. And again, we come back to our shared beliefs, and these have been reviewed each month as I present my report and in some of our education reports. And this evening, I just want to make a couple of comments about the safe and supportive schools, shared belief, as well as the goal that we have as a school district this year towards student wellness. And I've shared this Venn diagram. My first topic is I want to touch upon the school police officers, and I was also going to share the experience of traveling to Springford. And I have represented our efforts to achieve safe and supportive schools for our students is really represented by these two halves of this Venn diagram. That involves social, emotional, and mental health resources, as well as the physical safety of our facilities and the resources that we implement, the steps that we take, the protocols we establish to keep our facilities safe, or at least the efforts to keep them safe. We talked about, as we move in this direction and continue these conversations, some of the how of incorporating school police officers in each of the conversations we've had, whether it was that initial community conversation, the public board presentation on March 13th, the follow-up superintendent's roundtable that week, whether it's with students. I met with high school students last week, we also took a group to Springford, as you've heard. We have been prompted to think about things and to make sure that the questions posed to us are ones that we address, and if we don't have the answer now, that we seek it. And we're thinking about the policies and the administrative regulations that will establish the expectations and guide us as these individuals may become a part of our security teams, the professional development. We've had some really good conversation, meaningful conversation at policy committee about the professional development of individuals who may become a part of our security team, the accountability for the individuals to actually uphold and meet the expectations that are established by district administration, and always that ongoing review and analysis of our work. What can we improve? That's constantly something we consider. Administration has presented to our board really an effort to illustrate some of the planning that's gone in, and while this diagram is difficult to see when the slides are posted, it may be easier. But we've thought about some of the steps that administration has to take around communication and all of the different stakeholder conversations that we have engaged in or need to engage in as we consider this idea. Policy committee was introduced to the idea of revising policy to move from security to the possibility of school police officers. There are questions that remain there around that policy. We did not get to a point where the committee was in agreement, or we felt ready to move that policy forward to a first reading. There are obligations on the part of our board of school directors when it comes to actions and approvals and the human resources department, the job description, the actual seeking of the just-right-fit candidates, which is something that we can't emphasize enough, as well as the professional development, the onboarding, the acclamation to our school district, and then the community engagement on the part of these individuals, as well as how we would integrate them onto some of our teams where they could be key players and supportive personnel to some of the work that we do. So I wanted to really just mention to you this evening, in addition to some of that thinking and those conversations that really are ongoing, we have engaged our students, and we have heard from our students. They've raised really good questions, and I want to applaud the students that have opted to speak tonight, and even those that walked out today. And I mentioned this to a reporter, I have not seen any of the media clips, and we had everybody here today. We had ABC in helicopters, we had CBS, we had NBC, we had Fox, we had KYW, and our kids did a great job. And one of the things that I mentioned when I had an opportunity to speak is the few times that we've had these student walkouts for different reasons. We don't have a lot of them. They're always respectful, and our students approach administration, and they work with administration. We're concerned with their safety, as well as giving them a voice, and they have worked with us in every case, and today was no exception. So again, beyond that, the courage that it can take to stand up in front of really a large crowd, this is a pretty big crowd for one of our school board meetings, it's not easy. So I really appreciate the way that you are developing as individuals who are comfortable advocating for what you believe in. The students that we took to Springford, this is a picture, they engaged the police officers. Again, they weren't afraid to ask questions, they engaged the students from Springford, and on the bus ride home, we talked some more, so I really think it was meaningful. These conversations need to continue as we head down this path, but I was very appreciative of the opportunity to engage these students in those conversations. And again, with each conversation, I am certainly taking something away and considering something additional as we consider heading down this path. Shifting to policy 109, there's been some conversation tonight about library books and some of the policy conversations that have been happening about library books. And I wanted to mention to the group publicly, I am very appreciative of the opportunity to return these policies, 108 actually, 109, 109-1, and 109-2 to policy committee. We need further conversation on these policies. The language isn't where I believe it needs to be. It's not understandable by every reader, in my opinion, so I really appreciate that we can take this back to the committee and continue these conversations and continue to work on getting this to where it needs to be. I do not want individuals to be uncomfortable with the books their children may have access to. We've set up an accommodation for those individuals. I also don't want to deny access to those students that want it in our library. So we will continue to have these conversations. We have a couple of our librarians here tonight. They've felt a lot of pressure these days. Again, I just want to, it's National Library Recognition Week, I want to just give them another shout out, and I appreciate... I really appreciate their thoughtful approaches to what they do, and again, want to emphasize nobody is trying or attempting to bring anything in that would be hurtful or that would push up against the values of some of us in our community. So we will continue to work to get to a place where we find that common ground and we strike the compromise that affords the accommodation and the access that we're looking for. But to our librarians, I really appreciate your efforts, so thank you for coming out tonight, Jen and Melissa. A shout out from me, too. Mrs. Smith and I attended Mean Girls Thursday. We went to the first show, and we were really impressed with the acting and the singing. I think it was one of the most powerful productions that I've seen in my experience. I really appreciate the work that goes into the musicals. We also attended Matilda on behalf of Middle School East, their cast and crew, and Willy Wonka Jr., and really, all three musicals were great performances, so kudos to our students, our cast, our crew, and the directors, the producers, the volunteers behind the scenes. They do a lot of work to generate these productions, and all really good this year, so thank you for that. So this is a happy point. We get to talk about the end of the school year, and people have been sort of waiting for this. We're hoping that we're beyond any more inclement weather and that we can declare in this setting that June 9th, because we haven't used any inclement weather days, we're going to back up the end of the year three days. June 9th, that Friday, will represent the last day of school for underclassmen. It is also graduation for our seniors. Now, let's knock on wood and hope that nothing happens in response, but usually about this time of the year, we're able to share, so that families can plan vacations and whatever else, work schedules, et cetera. So that June 7th, 8th, and 9th will be those last three half-days for our underclassmen, the 9th being the last day of school. So some exciting news for those that are interested in that. And lastly, there's been a video created by some of our Viking Genius Bar students, and actually, the students are Seamus Kloon, the son of our Dr. Seamus Kloon, principal at East, and Tommy, or Edward Crowdy. And I thought I would share this video. It's five minutes, but it's about the district, and they are...they put this together for us, they used some drone footage, some interviews, and they did a really nice job, so we'll share this before we publish it.
Welcome to the Perkyon Valley School District. We serve over 5,000 children in the towns of Perkyon, Skippack, and Lower Frederick, and the borough is a trap called Bill and Strikes.
Perkyon Valley School District comprises eight schools, a high school, two middle schools, four elementary schools, and a vertical campus. Through innovative educational programs, a highly trained and deeply dedicated staff in support of our community, we offer students and families a world of opportunities.
Let's visit our school that we taught our students and staff.
I think it means to be a Viking to be part of a community, and I think that's my favorite thing about Perkyon Valley, is that you're part of the community, whether it's academics, athletics.
It means to have some school spirit, to be prideful, and to have community.
It's just a really nice and beautiful place to live, to work, and to be like...
It means to be strong, it means to be independent, and it means to be a hard worker.
What I like best about Perkyon Valley is it's a big school, but it has a small town feel. It feels like everyone is really connected and looking out for each other.
If like you're you, like a lot of people will like start being friends with you, because it's really easy to make friends here at PB.
What I like about PB is the community that we have here inside and outside of the school. I think that we're a community of learners, and I'm always appreciative of the support that we get from the community and parents.
I really like the atmosphere during all of the football games, just any of the sports that we have here, I think it's really cool. About what we do and the fans, just all around the district.
I like the community atmosphere. I like the pride that the students and teachers have, and I love my colleagues, and I have really good students like you.
The people are great here, all the teachers are nice, and the building's great.
I like that Middle School West, all the teachers are very welcoming, and they all like come out with hats and outfits on and stuff, and they're all very...
So I think the best part about being in this middle school is working with faculty and staff.
I like that they accepted me as their family, because I'm new, and they always treat me like this.
The teachers that are in this school put a lot of effort and passion, not just into the teaching, but into creating a chemistry, creating a bond with their students. By creating a chemistry with those students and with other teachers in the building, it is a very positive atmosphere.
I like that, like all the teachers are super nice, and like everybody at like every, like the community of like everyone at school is like very welcoming.
I like how it's fun to learn and be able to have fun at the same time.
This is my first year at Evergreen, and I love the sense of community and how close the staff works.
It's just really nice to be a part of this school.
It's just an amazing school, there's no bullies, the teachers are just the best here.
I like that the teachers are amazing, kind of, and they're nice every day.
I like that I get a welcome ticket for good P.A. here.
Skip P.A.
Because it's really fun that you get to have face paint and drugs, plenty of the teachers, and a pool.
I love that Skippack is like a family, it just has a great community, and everyone is really helpful here.
Everyone here is just nice.
Oh, it means to be safe, kind and responsible.
Well, I really enjoy like the teachers here, I like the like the school layout.
I like that it's like it supports you and everybody.
You're very strong, you can get through stuff easily.
For me, working and teaching at Tri-Swale Elementary is kind of like my ideal place because everybody here is so friendly.
We all are very cheerful and very good at helping each other, like you're brave and that you support others.
I like the teachers and the community, and they keep great friends.
What I like most about South Elementary is building relationships with the students and staff. It just feels like one big family here.
To show respect for everyone.
And I have to agree, I think the relationships we all have with each other as coworkers and with the students is something really special.
What do you like about South Elementary?
So thanks to Seamus and Tommy, they did a nice job, so we'll post that on our website as about us, and that concludes my report. Nope, we won't do that again.
Mr. Schubert, do you have anything?
Thank you.
I have no report.
Any discussion from the board on district committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items that represent a standard routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. Board members may request to have items removed for discussion. The consent items as of April 3rd, 2023 are listed below. Dr. Kohler, it's all yours.
Okay, section 4.01 is the education committee of the whole, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Smith for that.
Good evening, everyone. We have just a couple of items on the agenda this evening to share with you. I'll start out with what was a really positive event. We had our annual K-8 Family Night earlier in March. It was a red carpet night or theme, lots of different activities, amazing staff came out, lots and lots of students and their families, and we heard quite a bit of positive feedback. So thank you to our staff who organized. Huge thank you to the curriculum team. My team, I always say to Dr. Rob, they make me look good, and they did on that night. They did an amazing job planning it, but also to the staff that came out and did all of the activities. I also want to do a huge shout out, though, we had a lot of donations this year. In fact, the evening was sponsored by our foundation. They contributed $5,000 for us to run the night. It is completely free to our families to come out, but we had the Duck Inn, we had Home and Schools, you can see other places that donated prizes. You can see other places that donated prizes to us. The Duck Inn and the Home and School let us use their popcorn machine since it was a movie night and you can't have a movie night without popcorn. We couldn't keep up, but it was just an amazing night and kudos and thank you to everybody who contributed to making that a huge success. So, thank you. Secondly then here is it is curriculum season, as we like to call it, in that the next two months will be lots of curriculum updates to you on new curriculum guides and revisions, as well as the resources that go along with them. So, tonight I'm going to talk about one that we are ready to bring forth. But just a reminder that we bring forth the curriculums. We allow them to be on display pretty much for a month then. If there are any resources that we're requesting as well, we would usually present those and you have a month to review them, ask questions. And then, for example, this agenda or sorry, this education at work curriculum, we will ask to be approved officially then in the May board meetings. That's our typical operating practice. So, we do have one that we are bringing forth for you as kind of a first reading for you to look at over the course of the next month. This was a course that already exists in our high school, but during program planning, it was one that we were proposing some revisions to. And and you approved those revisions and so we rewrote the curriculum to align with that. And two of our high school business teachers, along with Mrs. O'Sullivan, our STEM supervisor, have worked on this course. This is really a course that provides an opportunity for students to have a cooperative experience out in and with an employer in our own community. Oftentimes, many students have to go to a tech school to have that opportunity. We offer that here within our own homeschool here at Perkyon Valley. And you can see then the scope and sequence, really the different aspects of how do you get a job? How do you research that? What does a resume look like, interviewing and so forth? So, you can certainly take time to peruse that document and we'd be happy to answer questions at any point. I also wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about what happens in in the curriculum world and kind of the audit that we did. Back in October of 2022, we presented to the school board an audit that our department had completed just simply on each of the curriculums for the various courses that we have in the district and what was their last date of approval. Really, we were looking at, it helps our department to determine where are the priorities? What's the curriculum that may be in need of new resources or just needs to be looked at again or revised in some way? So, this gives you a breakout by elementary, middle and high school, the years of some of these guides. And we've been working over the last several years to identify those priorities and then to revisit them. So, you can see we do have some that go back since the last time of 2009 or 2010, some curriculums that have not been reviewed since that point. So, based upon that information, what we do is in our areas, we have Mrs. Folks oversees humanities and Mrs. O'Sullivan in STEM. We identify what are the areas that we are working on each particular year. So, this just gives you a picture of what those two ladies will be overseeing and working with staff as we move into the 23-24 year. So, these are all under review currently right now, which means in the next two months, May and June, we'll be bringing all four of those curriculum guides, as well as resources that may go with them. So, quite a bit of of work has been done this year leading into next year. And then what happens is we then start to look at, well, what's coming for the following year? So, this just gives you an idea on Mrs. Folks' side with humanities. The areas that we will begin working on are considered to be in stage one or developing, where we're working on the part of what are we teaching? And then those that we're going to bring forth to you as curriculum guides in the next month or two, actually move into what we call stage two and three. So, the work is not done. We actually now begin to work on what are the actual learning activities? What are the assessments that we do? And we have a lot of collaboration amongst teachers as we move forward. So, you can see on this slide just what it is that Mrs. Folks and her team will be overseeing and looking forth to be working with as we move into 23-24. And then similarly, you can see from the STEM side, a lot of math work as that is an area of our comprehensive plan. And you'll see a lot of science because we have new steel standards that are coming out in science, which we have to be ready to implement in, I believe it's 25-26 school year. So, you'll see those coming up. So, I also wanted to talk with you. So, those, what I just shared with you, that drives what it is that we may need in terms of resources as we move forward each year. And typically, we use our Ready to Learn grant, which is a little over $500,000 each year that we receive, funds these types of items. And in most years, it has been able to fund the items that we need and one grade level of Chromebooks. The way Mr. Ganesh and I have the Chromebook recycle, he funds two of the grade levels out of his budget and then one grade level, since we purchase three a year to keep our devices refreshed, usually comes out of the Ready to Learn grant. So, I'm showing this to you so that you have an idea. These are projected costs going into 23-24 after July 1, when these funds are available for those areas that, as I mentioned, we're going to be presenting to you in the next two months, the curriculum guides and the resources that go with them. What you'll notice in the bottom is that there's not enough money out of the $500,000 to be able to cover what it is that we are anticipating. This is for a number of reasons. First of all, items that typically resources right now, many of the vendors we work with have six-year licenses, which means every six years you have to renegotiate, whether you're going to extend that resource or you're going to look and you're going to buy another resource. So, the work that we've done in the last six years is now coming back due. So, some of them are going to be a refresh or maybe just a renewal. Plus, as you noticed, we have several curricular areas that are somewhat outdated and we're trying to have those be reviewed. We also have big hitters. And what I mean by that is it's different when you might be looking for a resource for, let's say, an elementary music program versus when you're looking for a resource for a K-5 English Language Arts program. So, when you purchased into reading, if you recall, that purchase was probably around $400,000 for an elementary resource. And we split that cost across two years because the vendor was willing to work with us. Heavy hitters are those core areas, your math, ELA, science and social studies. They usually have a larger price tag to a resource that you're going to be implementing. So, we have a couple of heavy hitters coming up, as I'll call them. We've got an elementary social studies. We've got a sixth through eighth grade math, as well as then you can see some other smaller areas that are sprinkled through there that we're anticipating some level of resources for. I anticipate this to continue for the next couple of years anyway, as we are, again, that six-year cycle is coming up and we have some of these larger curricular areas that are under review. So, in talking with administration in our cabinet, we have talked about, well, how might we be able to fund these additional needs? You can see, we typically use the Ready to Learn grant. We're expecting that to be exceeded this particular year. If you recall, I believe a month or two ago, Mr. Weaver had presented to you the COVID reserve funds and you had allocated a portion of that. And there is $371,000 remaining in that COVID reserve. Our request at this point in time is to utilize those funds that were designated for learning loss or pandemic impacts to assist us in moving forward with some of these curricular areas. And then to consider including in the budget for 24-25, the possibility of adding maybe another 300 or 400,000 when we have projections to what that would look like within the curriculum budget. You will see that on as an action item on the board agenda this evening. Questions or comments on where we're at with curriculum and what's coming forth? Dr. Camp?
I just have a quick question, just for clarification. The COVID reserve fund monies, are those including the ones that were supposed to be set aside for the mental health and wellness?
Those are separate. So, mental health and wellness, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Russell, we have the ESAR funds are still remaining. We have some funds in there. I know there were some other grant opportunities. The COVID reserves were separate. I don't know, Mr. Weaver, if you want to clarify what those were for.
Sure. So, when the when the actual pandemic hit, we had certain budgetary items that were ongoing in the middle of the year that we stopped. So, for instance, transportation, March 13th, 2020, we stopped transporting for the rest of the year. So, what we did was the difference between the budget and where the actual was, the board worked together with administration to set those separate items aside and we called it COVID reserve for the purposes moving forward to be as a reserve just in case. We didn't know how long the pandemic was going to last, all that kind of stuff. So, we tried to prepare ourselves with that opportunity because we budgeted those items and we did not have the expenditures. So, we agreed to work together to offset those monies.
No, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we still had those ESAR, that it wasn't getting mixed in together. So, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Ms. White?
So, I want to understand a little bit more about the math allocation for the $300,000 number right there in the review. So, with regards to that number, this is on the cycle for review, correct?
Yes.
On the normal cycle, like so it's not getting pulled out separately and looked at? Because I understand that there's been a lot of scrutiny about our math scores and about the response to some of the, you know, different test results and learning loss. So, I just wanted to just clarify that amount of money is on the normal cycle for the curriculum review, not necessarily in response to testing?
So, I would say that's actually twofold. The resource that we use in the middle school, we use, it's called Glencoe Math. That subscription is ending. So, that did force, if you want to say, a review in middle school math. We needed to do a review. We knew we needed to rewrite curriculum and we've been looking at resources this year. The 300,000 is an estimate. I believe Mrs. O'Sullivan's working really hard to get that to be lower. But that is, was driven initially because of the resource ending. However, it is on our math action plan, which we developed in response to our scores, that we would be looking at professional development, best practices, curriculum and resources. So, kind of in tandem.
Understood. So, then the support that you're looking for, that amount of money is really necessary to help move forward the initiative to address any potential learning loss in the lower scores. So, in other words, you're looking at, you're looking for curriculum to rectify the problem.
So, we write the curriculum ourselves. This money is to purchase a resource to help implement that. So, for example, the elementaries use Math in Focus if you have elementary children or you have heard of Into Reading. There are companies that we work with to assess the value of the resources that they are providing to us. And then based upon that, sometimes it might still have a textbook. Sometimes it has a digital subscription to it or it's a combination of that or it's teacher resources. That's what that 300,000 would be, is allocated for right now.
Supplemental assistance towards it. Understood. So, the shortfall, this amount of money is, curriculum needs this amount of money to make sure that we implement our curriculum with fidelity.
Correct. Thank you. Evans-Brock?
So, my first question I had had, which I believe you've answered is, are these one-time costs? This is, this is not a one-time cost. This is going to be occurring year after year.
So, all of these that are on here in six years will probably come back. So, they are one-time costs for these particular items, but next year I'll have a list that's just as long, that we've projected out, given, you know, I can estimate for you when we do like a K-5 implementation, I know I need 300 or 400,000, depending if it's ELA or math for sure. And elementary math's coming up next year. So, yes, I foresee that this is going to be an ongoing need. The items that are on the list will change each year, but yes, an ongoing need.
So, you know where I'm going. Why are we looking at using COVID reserve monies, one-time monies, as opposed to making this a part of the budget now?
I think we've had conversations about the desire and the need to have it become part of the budget. And at this point in the budgeting process, thought that those monies were there, that were identified, that could be used for curriculum, that that might be a good utilization of those funds. Certainly, I defer to Dr. Russell or Mr. Weaver if either of you would like to add.
Well, I don't disagree, Mrs. Evans-Brock. We've talked about, we need to add to the budget moving forward this year and moving forward from this year. And what we're seeing these price tags add up to tells us that the Ready to Learn grant funds aren't enough to cover everything if we want to maintain that one-to-one. If the governor's budget comes through with some of those enhancements that he has proposed, that will help. But really, we believe moving forward, we're going to need to ask for more money in the curriculum and instruction budget. This year, we felt that since Mr. Weaver and Mrs. Hurd were comfortable giving up those $871,000, that we could apply 371,000 of it to offset these costs.
You know my concern, Jim. We keep using these one-time monies and it's putting us in a hole for next year's budget, for the following year's budget. So, we're going to have to make it up at some point. And so, COVID reserve money was always meant to be used for one-time expenditures. And we've already put mental health resources through ESAR funds that we have to find budgetary money for at some point. And now, curriculum, which is what we are in the job of doing, is educating students. So, curriculum is, should be a top priority for us, that we're going to again, use one-time funds instead of starting to work this into the budget is a big concern for me.
So, that is a great point. And you know that the way that we operate here is we don't tend to like to match these ongoing costs with one-time expenditures. The way that I I look at this, because we've had conversation and you know, it's Lori and then Dr. Russell and then at the end of the day, I have to come to the board and I have to explain this and then I've got to go back to Amy and explain how these things all work. The way that I look at this is that Dr. Russell mentioned the governor's budget. Right now, in the gov, in the proposal that we have for the budget, which you'll see later tonight, we are only showing a 4% increase and a 3% increase based upon average increases for ESB and for special education. The governor has proposed a budget at 20% and 19%. So, while we never trust Harrisburg, because we know that there are an awful lot of politics that go on up there, the way that I looked at that and kind of surrounded myself that I'm okay with the use of this money, this particular cases, this is actually upfronting those monies that we do expect in some way, shape or form to come from the governor's budget. And yet, to use these monies, it'll be backfilled by the by the governor's budget once it gets proposed or approved. We do feel that the 4% we're at now will come in somewhat higher. We just can't predict that. So, it's a little bit of a hedge, so to speak. But I do anticipate that those monies moving forward, because those are revenue streams that will become part of the ESB and the special education moving forward. Granted, every year it's open to discussion and debate, but we feel once that those monies go in the budget, there is a true effort up in Harrisburg to keep those monies in the budget moving forward, so we can set those monies aside in future years. The other, my other concern to that point is that we are extremely late in our view of when the budget is due. This, we're heading, we're in April now. We're heading into preliminary budget approval. And to be honest with you, at this point in time, to lump $384,000 back onto an expenditure moving forward would not be a good thing. And so, for this year, we would ask that we would, you know, we would take a little bit discretion on the use of one-time monies to be backfilled by the state to move us forward.
I appreciate those answers and that rationale. Do we expect a governor's budget before we have to finalize our budget?
That is another good question. Historically speaking, it does take quite a while for things to happen in Harrisburg. And while we are hearing good things, that they are in agreement with some of the funding, we do know that it will not end up anywhere, it won't end up near where the governor has proposed it at this point in time. We are hopeful to do that, to get the good news from Harrisburg, but remember, we also have final budget approval early in June. So, typically, the state does take their their good old time. And so, that is part of the hedge that we have to understand moving forward. So, no guarantee from the state.
And I know this is something that we'll talk more about during the finance section. But just in terms of some of the the things that were presented last month in terms of SPOs versus SROs, there was discussion between two of the options, that it was only a $300,000 difference. And so, I think maybe that's something that we need to go back and look at in terms of, that's $300,000, that that's curriculum budget right there. So, maybe we need to be making some of these decisions that are within our budgetary means, rather than continuing to add on. We know that this is an extremely difficult time for our taxpayers. So, to keep adding more and more and more to our budget is concerning to me.
Thank you. Any other comments about curriculum?
Who's our K-5 social studies vendor and when do we shop that around or look at other options if that's desirable?
Yeah. So, good question. We have been piloting. We presented to the board, I think, the last couple of months, two areas that we are piloting in. And I know Mrs. Folks is working with the teachers now. We anticipate to be recommending a resource either in May or June.
So, who's our vendor now?
Who's our vendor now?
Learn that and learn what they're doing now? And is there a renewal? Or do we have a few options for when we decide what curriculum to go with, including the one we have now?
Correct. So, just to clarify, there is a difference between a curriculum and a resource. So, a curriculum is what we write. It's written by us. It's based upon standards and it's what we teach. And then the resource helps us to implement that, a core resource. So, we have, and Mrs. Folks can maybe let me know what we have right now. I don't have that at the top of my head. But we are in the process of reviewing. So, we have a rubric to review additional resources. So, yes, we look at multiple vendors. Mrs. Folks, do you know off the top of your head what our current vendor is? So, TCI and McGraw-Hill are what we are currently using. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Folks, social studies is a curriculum that was quite outdated at the elementary level.
It has been since 2010. So, actually, some of our grade levels do not even have a a resource by a large vendor.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Keenan?
McGraw and TCI. So, and we'll be, the curriculum, so that that cost, what is that $215,000 for exactly? What does that buy?
That would be, so when we bring forth in May or June, we will tell you the vendor that we're looking at and exactly what's included in it. Like it might be a student consumable, that they might be. Like it might be a student consumable that they might be writing and are working in. It might be a digital license to something. It might be, I'm thinking sometimes in social studies, there are these like news, like weekly news readers. So that's what the team right now with teachers and Mrs. Folks are working on reviewing based upon the criteria that we set. And then we will bring forth what exactly that is. The 215 is an estimate based upon what we know some resources have cost in the past.
Okay. And this is an annual expense?
It would be a six-year agreement.
What was our last? So that 215 is for six years?
Typically, that's what the vendors do now. It's a six-year renewal. You pay it upfront, it's good for the six years.
And what was our last one?
For social studies was back in 2010. I don't know exactly what that cost was in 2010.
Would that have been six years ago? What was, was it six years ago that?
No, the last time elementary social studies was reviewed was 2010. So it is 13 years old, what the teachers have been working with.
Right. And what did that cost us in 2010?
I would have to look. We can find that.
So currently, so currently, social studies is running without a technological resource. The last time that resource was updated is in 2010.
K-5, you mean?
Yeah, correct. K-5 social studies without a technological resource. At that time, probably back in 2010, probably wasn't one-to-one. I'm sure the resource added at that time was probably much cheaper than the $215,000. This resource, which we'll get in a month or two, will be a technological resource and an in-person resource that could be used. And it'll be a contract passcode for six years.
And again, will there be a few options to choose from? Or a few options that are weighed against each other?
So that's what the teachers, we have teachers piloting materials now. Mrs. Folks has been leading that. So we do that work and we will present to you what we believe is the best recommendation. And we will also show you, you know, we compared it to these two other vendors and here was the teachers' ratings on that. So that you can see why we chose the one that we did. Okay? Any comments from the audience on curriculum items?
Thank you, Judy Lofton from Skipback. I do have a question just to follow up on the conversation between Mr. Weaver and Mrs. Evans-Brockett. And perhaps it's more of a budgetary question. But wouldn't it be more transparent to actually have the budget categories aligned to budget expenditures and anticipated revenues? So if, for example, we're actually anticipating more revenues coming from Harrisburg, shouldn't that be reflected in the budget to recognize what's occurring where? And I'm also thinking about the fact that we revised our whole budgetary process a couple of years ago to be able to track projected expenditures and actual expenditures over time. And so if we're not actually accurately reflecting how we're doing that, then it's going to be very complicated moving forward. So it just makes, to me, I would think that we would want to actually have each category of the budget be presented transparently.
Just as a quick answer to that, we try to be as transparent as we possibly can. And we do provide an awful lot of financial information to the school board and it's always open for review. As you'll see in the finance section, we have actually gone out with an average estimate to include that revenue stream into the ESB and the special education moving forward. The problem is we can't predict what's going to happen in Harrisburg. So yes, I agree with you. That's, you know, be transparent to match those items, absolutely. This is kind of like a, we're all in agreement from an administrative perspective that this would be a very unique situation moving forward for us to address this in this particular manner, to use the COVID reserve. But in 24, 25, put that dollar figure in and move forward.
So you are not making it a policy to use one-time monies for ongoing expenditures? You're just doing it just this one unique time? And then you're kind of playing a little shell game to, saying you're projecting that you're getting more money than your budget actually says it is?
I wouldn't really call it a shell game. I would call it more of a recognition of the fact that we have issues at Harrisburg and they don't always come forward with monies in a proper amount. So I wouldn't necessarily call it a shell game.
But you're saying you're counting on money that, then you say you're not counting on?
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll look forward to seeing the budget presentation.
Anyone else on curriculum? All right. So the next item is the elementary report card. This is an action item 4.02. We have this past year, Mr. DeAndrea and I have been leading a group of elementary staff members through a committee, some work to revise our elementary report card. Really, our goal was to ensure that there was alignment between the report card and the scope and sequence of the current curriculum. For example, English Language Arts curriculum has been rewritten in the last several years. The report card, we haven't made sure that that aligns exactly with when things are taught. We also wanted to review the format of the elementary report card. We got some feedback from parents about maybe it's not as parent-friendly as it could be. Or we had lots of different legends, I'll call them. You know, what does an M mean? We had checks, check pluses. So those were our goals. We started with teachers and solicited some feedback. We did do a survey of our parents. Our principals have also shared their thoughts as well as the curriculum supervisors. And what we learned throughout this, that I think we knew going into it was, anytime you talk about grading, it can be emotional and there's different viewpoints on that. And so we really tried to truncate and chunk the work. And so what we're bringing forth to you for revisions for 23, 24 are really mainly formatting and a minor, one or two content area changes. But the committee is going to continue to work then throughout the 23, 24 year on those more significant maybe content changes, you know, that alignment to the scope and sequence, and then bring that forth to you in the 24, 25. So what you will notice, if you're in board docs and you look at the drafts that are there, you will see that we've rearranged the layout of the report card to have the core courses first. So the current report card, if you, if it's printed, so it does look different if you're looking at it in parent view. But if it's printed, it might have art or music first. And we wanted ELA, math, science and social studies to be on that first page. We've also typically in the current report card, a teacher can select a comment. They might choose comment 11, Lori talks a lot in class, or she participates well, something like that. The parent has to go to the legend then to find out what number 11 means. We would like to work with synergy to actually pre-populate the comment. That it's just going to be written there for them. They don't have to have a legend to figure that out. We also are trying to, instead of having three different legends for how teachers are grading, we have set here one set standard of key reporting that will be used in all of the areas. So we're eliminating that check, check plus. And I think there were two other reporting features. We also recognize that in our half-day kindergarten program, we are not having the time to really present science and social studies in a manner that we feel comfortable assessing students on their content knowledge in that area. It's really integrated into the ELA and in the math. So we are recommending to remove a grade from the kindergarten report card for science and social studies. And we are recommending to revise the social studies reporting category. The current report card has a couple of reporting categories underneath that teachers give grades for. And we would like to narrow it down based upon the standards to make sure that it's knowledge of concepts, content and vocabulary from the four areas of the social studies standards, which are civics, economics, geography and history. So you can certainly look at the samples that are in there. They pretty much look the same, really with the redesign. These are the changes again, that we are recommending for this year. Or sorry, for the 23, 24 year, we would be working with synergy to make those. And then we would bring back maybe some more for the following year once we have an opportunity to really delve into more with our teachers. The social study, sorry, the science, math and ELA. Bless you. And we have some samples on here just as to what it would look like. Any questions on that? Anything from the public? All right. So the bulk of our presentation is actually on our enrollment and staffing as we have quite a few new recommendations to share with the board this evening. We did hold two education ad hoc committees on March 20th and March 27th, where we talked about each of the pieces that we will be presenting tonight and solicited some feedback from those that were present, which was really helpful. So this is the first month that you're going to see some changes to what we've been presenting. So the elementary projections are here on the screen. This does look different than what we have presented in the past months, simply because we now are actually showing actual kindergarten registrations. So that's why you'll notice, for example, at Evergreen, we have 40 registrations to this point, which only drives out a 1.5 staff. So we know that's going to shake itself out a little bit in the next couple of months, but that is what the projected difference is here on the elementary. So kind of have a question mark hanging over there. We made a couple other changes to some particular grades at Evergreen that I'll talk about in a moment when we get to some of the pieces at Evergreen. Middle-level projections, we are still projecting a decrease of four staff in this particular area due to declining enrollment that has reached the middle level. And at the high school, we are really in the throes of scheduled development. Dr. Moss and her team, all of the course requests from students are in. We have met with each of the department chairs to really look at staffing and what our needs are. And at this point in time, we are indicating that we do have a retirement in health and physical education that we do not believe our course requests drive out filling that position. So I'll, again, I'll recognize that a little bit later. But that is one position that we're recognizing as a minus one here that would not need to be replaced with health and physical education. So this slide hopefully does look familiar. This is what, since January, we have been projecting and sharing with you. It was our decrease of a minus three due to enrollments. And then you could see those requests that we had on the far right. I just want to clarify, the sixth grade, middle school east and the high school counselor are positions that already exist, that the board previously approved and staff are in those positions, but they are not in the budget. The counselor was paid for out of ESER for the last two years and needs to be built into the budget. And the sixth grade position was approved in August after you had approved the budget. So those are two adds that are just more of a budgetary impact. And then the transition coordinator and the inclusion facilitator were the two asks that we had out of that January data presentation. So that all came to a plus one. So keep that in mind as we go through these requests and I'll summarize everything at the end. So these were the five areas that we presented on in the education ad hoc committees to again, get feedback from stakeholders that happened to be present at those meetings. I'll start out with English Language Development. And I would just point out, there is a lot more information in the slides in the education committee if you're looking for more. I'm trying to be succinct tonight. We've included one slide per area. I'm happy to answer questions though, but there certainly is a lot more in the ed committee slides. ELD, this was talked about extensively at our annual data presentation. We are in the midst of a program review that's being facilitated by MCIU and we have some preliminary results from them. But basically, what came out of the data presentation was we knew that this population is not making the growth that we would like to see. We also know that our population has doubled since pre-pandemic. And we're also seeing students that have more needs. They are newcomers, they are slifes, they don't necessarily even speak the language, speak English. We also know that our schedules sometimes pose barriers to providing the instruction based upon need and that the role of that ELD specialist is really multifaceted. They do lots of things, much more than simply being in the classroom with an ELD student. So at this point in time, given those increased needs and a population that we want to ensure we're providing the best we can, we are recommending two additional full-time ELD specialists. And you can see our current alignment of responsibilities that we're thinking is really putting the specialists in the buildings that have the majority of our ELD students. We would still have two areas that are shared. So we would have a total of five specialists to cover our seven buildings. And just another thing to point out, our gen ed staff is really looking for more support from that ELD specialist because the students are really out more in their gen ed classrooms than they are with the ELD specialist. This is one of those that is a very unique position to fill. And after a conversation tonight, if the board is in support of moving forward, ideally administration would like to maybe seek action on the 11th to create the position. So we could at least post them as anticipated. Doesn't mean that, you know, we're waiting for the budget approval, of course, but it would allow us to begin moving on an anticipated position if the board is interested. We can certainly wait till May if we need to as well. So that's ELD. Then we have our elementary specials. And just to give a little bit of history here, at least short history, we did an entire review of all of the elementary specials back in the 18, 19 school year. And that was because of a need that was expressed that started with the principals at the time for there was a need for social, emotional, mental health, wellness. And we also were not covering the Pennsylvania state standards in the area of health in our elementary schools. And so there was a desire to how do we fit in something else? But whenever you try to fit something in, something else has to give. So we began exploring what could that health and wellness curriculum look like? Every curricular area had to present to a committee what it was that they teach in their classes. And you can see then on the screen, we tried multiple different ways to incorporate some health and wellness time by easing it in. We reduced all areas to give 12 days. The next year, we ended up with a split between health and wellness and Spanish. Back in March of 2020 though, administration at that point in time recommended twice at two separate school board meetings, that at that point in time, we felt that health and wellness outweighed Spanish at that time. And the recommendation was to remove the elementary Spanish program. For various reasons, that did not occur and we ended up with the split that you see in 2021. In 21, 22, and then this current year, health and wellness actually was brought forth and board approved to be a 30-day special. And Spanish and library were actually split. So for the last three years, 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23, Spanish has been 15 days per year in each grade. And then this, these past two years, library was also 15 days. So we have full-time librarians in our elementary schools. They are there, the, you know, full-time. They, one cycle, they teach lessons to their students that are appropriate in library. How do you use the library? There are read-alouds, there's different activities. And then the other cycle, we call it their responsive week. And that is when maybe they are out in classrooms, working with teachers. Maybe a class comes in to do research. A teacher brings students down to do book selection. They're doing other things that are related to the library on that responsive week. The Spanish teachers, we have two full-time Spanish teachers in the elementary program right now. One cycle, they might teach at Evergreen, the next cycle at Skipback, and then they go back and forth in that regard. So we certainly recognize, and I agree with much of what was commented on by our public earlier about the value of what a language can do. I just want the board to understand that the reality of our current program is it is 15 days every year. It is not, in my opinion, a language program. We are not teaching students to be proficient in a language. And removing the program will not have an impact on the progress that students can make in Spanish when we start in the middle school. It's not going to impact. We start from ground zero in our secondary program, whether they have an elementary program or they don't. Really, I looked through our curriculum. Our teachers did an amazing job of writing the Spanish curriculum for 15 days. What I would say to you are the main points are that it really is about the similarities and differences between various cultures and developing empathy and acceptance. There are things in here about, we're going to learn the colors. We're going to learn our numbers. There's a lot about, we're going to learn about the Spanish culture. So it is really more about a cultural exposure and empathy and acceptance than it is about teaching a language. We believe administratively that we can build in similarities and differences and a cultural exposure and empathy and acceptance into many areas. Almost every other special could absolutely integrate that. Library returning to 30 days can absolutely integrate that through the books that the students read, through activities. Our Into Reading program in our elementary English Language Arts program already does that with some of the texts that's available and the conversations that kids are having or what they're writing about. A new social studies curriculum can absolutely build those things in there and actually broaden beyond just exposing kids to Spanish-speaking countries. But exposing them to our second highest, I think, language here, Mrs. Folks, correct me if I'm wrong, is Arabic. We have a lot of Arabic students. So we can expose students to other languages and cultures beyond the Spanish. So again, our recommendation, as we look at the values and what we need here in Perkielmann Valley and what our needs are, is a recommendation to remove Spanish programming at the elementary level. Those two full-time Spanish teachers would be reallocated to other areas in which they are certified. Again, there's no impact to our Spanish program and we would purposely incorporate those cultural aspects into other courses that we have. Given the conversations earlier, are there any questions from the board on Spanish or ELD? Maybe before I move on to the other recommendations? Dr. Kohler?
Not really about Spanish per se, but I remember when we reduced it so that Spanish was split with library. And at the time, librarians came in and talked about making a case for why that would work, that they felt it was sufficient to have the 15 days and split, like you said, spend time with classes and doing research and other things. So I'm wondering, has that not gone well? And why are we feeling a need to go back to the full library?
Yeah, good question. I wouldn't say that it's not gone well. However, what I think we have learned is that the flexibility of that schedule has worked differently in different buildings. So maybe we have some, created some inconsistencies regarding the experiences for our students based upon the level of flexibility that happens on that responsive week. I have received, I think they'd be okay with me sharing. I don't know if they're still here. I see them shaking their head. I did receive an email from the four elementary librarians indicating that they are very supportive of returning to a 30 days in library and would appreciate that scheduled time again, when the class comes in. And if you think about it now, on the responsive week, the ELA teacher is And if you think about it now, on the responsive week, the ELA teacher is giving of ELA time to take their class to the library to select books. So it's also thinking about the time that we have available and how we want to best utilize that and really focusing on the ELA and math in those core classrooms as well. Mr. Keenan?
I'd just like to say that the, I look at what we're doing when it, when I can in a personal, from a personal perspective, talk to my kids about what's going on and what's coming in front of the board. And I, all I can say, you know, regardless of how I vote or what we do on the Spanish teachers is, the Spanish teacher at South is implementing one of the best courses that any of my kids have had. And now granted, they haven't gone through middle school and high school yet. But the interest level in the materials and the way they're presented and I, and the design of the courses are just enchanting to these kids. So if, you know, if that can be kept in Perkyelman Valley and, you know, but that same skill set can be used wherever in Perkyelman Valley, that, that, that's what I'm really interested in, you know? And, yeah, if, and I heard that they'll be kept and and reassigned, what, what, how do we know? You want to know?
Those are great questions.
Do we get to hear from the teachers as to what they're doing? You know, and because you heard, you just said, we heard from the librarians before about their take on what was happening. And this is really, I mean, good for, I mean, I'm not, I mentioned that I'm not disappointed with library time. But, you know, what do the Spanish teachers think of their continuing role and where they'll be?
And I have spoken to both of them, Mrs. Folks and I had a meeting with them and I received feedback from both of them. Nobody wants their program to be removed. However, they are both, one is very excited about the opportunity to increase supports to our ELD students. And the other one understands where the priorities are and and recognizes the change that we need to make. I really appreciate you commenting, these two teachers are phenomenal teachers and we absolutely want to utilize their talents in another role. So basically what we do is we look at the certifications that they hold and we look at our open positions. And that happens this time of year for everybody and people might shift around. So maybe one year I'm teaching third grade ELA and the next year I'm teaching fourth grade. One of these teachers has an ELD certification and might be very interested in that position. Another one has quite a few certifications and I'm sure those talents would benefit maybe a general education classroom or somewhere else that he or she is certified for. Mr. Dorr?
So you mentioned there wasn't a lot of similarities across the different elementary schools. That's kind of why you looked at removing this?
I, I think I was referencing library when I mentioned maybe some inconsistencies or, or correct me if I'm wrong.
I heard that you said they were inconsistencies in Spanish, how it was taught across the elementary schools.
No, I, no, I did not mean that if I said that, I apologize, not in Spanish. I believe I was referring to that responsive week where the librarians don't have a scheduled class that it may have been implemented differently in the different buildings. Spanish, I will say, the last few years in the fifteen days, those teachers have worked extremely collaboratively. And I think we do, you know, to Mr. Keenan, I would agree with you, they are dynamic in their classroom and have made it, the kids say it's fun and they, they do enjoy that class.
Well, why get rid of it?
So what, as I said before, I think, Mr. Dorr, if we were trying to provide an experience, you know, some of the, the research that people maybe shared earlier was about truly teaching a language. I don't think that's the purpose of what we have in place with fifteen days. I think we're giving an exposure to a language, we spiral it through across six years. Maybe our students remember how to say the numbers or the colors, they're really not learning a language. If we had an immersion program or if that's what we really wanted, I, I think that would be very different. And we would be, you know, maybe advocating for something different. Our program is not about language proficiency. And yet, when you look at how do you rate a world language program, Mrs. Folks is working on that right now, starting that with world language. That's one of the first things you look at, are you producing language speakers? And our current program is not doing that. So administration is valuing then other needs in the district above the, the Spanish program that we currently have.
Yeah, but it's my understanding that's creating an interest in foreign language or foreign cultures that they can develop in middle school and high school. I mean, I had it when I was in elementary school, I continued through high school with it. I mean, that's where I got that love from. So it concerns me that this is being suggested to be taken away. I'd be fine if it was any language, I mean, it doesn't have to be Spanish, but some exposure.
Right, and, and I appreciate your opinion, you know, as we try to value things, that's where, where we're at right now. I think you could say that for any of the specials, it gives an exposure to something. Yes, Dr. Campley?
A couple of things, one, I definitely, what Mr. Dorr said, when they're getting that exposure, right? So we don't have Bach didn't become Bach in elementary music class. So we're not expecting these students to be fluent Spanish speakers or fluent of any secondary language in elementary school, given the amount of time that they have. But we are expecting that they be exposed to it to drive that passion and the hope that they have that more openness to learn it as they get into middle school and high school and they start to see the value and the passion and maybe they have a drive to become bilingual. Because we are a monolingual, I don't know who it was that spoke to it earlier this evening in the community, but we're one of the only monolingual countries and we're really doing a disservice to our students in this nation, quite frankly, of not having more opportunities for language. The end of the day, though, it is my understanding that by taking out those two positions, that's kind of where the funding is coming from to have the two ELD positions that are needed. And on the fiscal end of things, it's talking about priorities and where are we putting monies? And that's kind of, you know, I'm, as the educator in me, the, the thought of removing Spanish, the thought of even the fact that we decreased Spanish killed me. But then I'm also understanding of the fact, you know, Mrs. Evans-Brockett talks about taxes and the economy right now and asking families to put more money out in higher taxes is something to be considered. And we are talking about health and wellness and students, you know, going through difficult times. And we, then we see things like what happened in Nashville and we want to make sure our schools are secure and we want to have safety. And I think we need to kind of, when we start prioritizing, it's like, okay, well, we have fifteen days of Spanish. So I'll be on, like, that's the hard part of this position is trying, and I, and I sympathize with administration trying to figure out where do we get these fundings from? So I guess my question, my long-winded question is, if we didn't remove those two Spanish positions, how much money would we have to come up with? And is there any way that we can try and balance it by, you know, also shaving something else? So do, you know, Mrs. Evans-Brockett was talking about the safety and the SPOs. Do we really need to spend the full amount or can we take, can we keep our schools safe and do it in a slower fashion so that we are also continuing to educate our students and give them a well-rounded education? And that's, is there a way to find the funding for this? Or are our hands completely tied and we have to prioritize? Because I have, and everybody knows, because I was at the last two education committees, this is a hard, this is, this is not a difficult topic or an easy topic for me. This is very difficult because I feel like we're really starting to chip away at students' educational experiences at a time when we are supposed to be preparing them to work in a global economy.
So just the only thing, I'll respond to both of your comments is that I think we can still expose kids to culture, even outside of Spanish in ELA, in social studies, in our other special areas. Will they learn to speak the numbers of Spanish? No. So I will defer during the finance presentation, Mr. Weaver can certainly talk about what that impact would be. And it does seem, since these are the two that I presented first, like it's an even swap. It's not necessarily, there are other positions that we're going to talk about that, you know, we could value one over the other. So certainly I'll show you at the end how I put it all together and, and then open to input for how we might want to value those things. Ms. White?
I just want to thank you and your team again for the, the heavy lift that you did two weeks, two weeks running, literally two weeks back to back, rolling all of this information out to the ad hoc committee. It was extensive and it was very, very thorough. So I also want to just acknowledge that I, as, as you know, am, are well aware, I advocated very hard to keep Spanish for exactly the reasons Dr. Campley, Mr. Dorr and Mr. Keenan mentioned. I felt that there is a great value to that exposure at a young age. And at the time, my daughter was in the program at Skipback and was really, and really valued it. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. The thing that I have evolved in my opinion about is the diligence that you have given this over four years of discussion in really looking to make sure that what we were providing really crossed every T and dotted every I. We really did try to do what was best, I believe. And I supported all along, the compromises all along the way, the last four years in watching this evolve. And we have really come full circle. And the acknowledgement that the cultural value and your mention of our second highest language in the district being Arabic, it's a perfect example of the, of the need for a cultural immersion and differentiation at the elementary school level. And so I think that if we can create curriculum within our special areas, and I know that our teachers are already doing this, our librarian spoke beautifully, I mean, I cried, to, to the point that they are truly trying to expose our students to all cultures and all varieties of people. I think that that, to me, is, is a compromise in allowing them to do that for thirty days and then also putting the talents of our Spanish teachers elsewhere. So that's how, what I have to say about Spanish. With regards to ELD, one of the, my takeaways from the ad hoc was that I, I'm not exactly convinced that this is enough of an ask. Given the amount of responsibility that these teachers have, I, I really feel very strongly that, for example, one between east and west, just from a logistics standpoint, I think is not reasonable. I think that there should at least be one at east and one at west. And I don't know that one, only one at the high school is sufficient. So I, I'm really concerned about the share and the ask for only two. I know that in developing job descriptions, you have a very specific idea about what these folks will, will do and, and carry in terms of their workload. And I, and I just have some reservation about this not being enough of an ask based on the conversations at ad hoc about the importance and about the, the intensive need that these kids need.
I, I appreciate you sharing everything and how your thoughts have evolved over the years. The, the plus to, ELD, I wish it was a science. I wish it was a caseload from, you know, the state that just said they can only carry a caseload of twenty. That'd be easy, take our hundred and twenty kids divided by twenty. It, it's, it's not that mathematical, it really is a science. Having thirty of your students who are, you know, a higher level, higher functioning and they're going to exit ELD soon is very different than having even five, you know, of your newcomers that are, you know, your beginning kids. So it really is based upon need, you know, Mrs. Folks really has been the one working with the intermediate unit and is suggesting this particular alignment of responsibilities based upon the number of students in the buildings and their level of need as well. So we have put the full-time people at South Schwanxville and the high school because that's where our greatest needs are right now in terms of the level of the students. We do believe it's feasible to share between the other buildings that we have. That doesn't mean I might not come back to you another year and say, didn't work, we need more. You know, our population might grow exponentially, we're not sure. We believe this is a, a really good start based upon the information that we have from the intermediate unit right now.
Thank you for your diligence, honestly.
Okay, I'll go into then a couple of other areas and then I'll certainly pause at the end of the staffing piece if there's any public comment. Dr. Boyd presented to the education ad hoc committee some information on school psychologists. We currently obviously have seven buildings. And you can see, we, we always look to some of the national organizations for each of these unique roles as to what do they recommend ratios be. Remember, those are just recommendations, though, we aren't always within those, sometimes we're above, sometimes we're below. We have also utilized contracted psychological services. You know, there's some areas within Dr. Boyd's realm that it's really difficult to find contracted services to help support us. We've been very successful in the area of psych, psychological services. We've also seen an increase in the evaluations and reevaluations from nineteen twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two. You can see so far where we were at at the end of February and I know her team continues to monitor that. Where, we certainly have seen an increase. We're not quite sure, is that going to level itself out? Is that going to continue? Is that just a trajectory that we're on? So we would like a little bit more time to see how that plays itself out. We also know that psychologists do so much more than testing. And this is just one way to look at them is to look at the number of assessments that they do. It's simply one way. We would love to be able to expand our psychologists to maximize their expertise as well, to maybe have them, you know, have time in their schedule to work with students, run student groups to be part of the data teams in their buildings. We don't have a plan in place, though, for how exactly we would utilize that. And we'd like a little bit more time to be able to develop that as well so that we, when we do have additional staff, we're able to roll out really well what it is we want them to do. So right now, and quite honestly, at the education ad hoc committee, we recommended that we felt like we could continue with contracted services for one more year and then bring back to you in twenty-four, twenty-five, the idea of if we needed to add psychologists then. The committee was very, pushed us a little bit to, you know, don't you think you need one? Don't you think you need more than that actually? How can we get to where we want to be? And so we did do some thinking, we have looked at this, we are at this point recommending one additional psychologist to be added to that. We do believe we can continue to use contracted services to help supplement beyond the contract, sorry, the psychs that we would have in place then, and we would reevaluate for the twenty-four, twenty-five year to be able to say to you, do we believe that we need more at that point? And we'd have some more details and plans in place. We also, Dr. Russell has applied for a grant through the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, which we actually believe we could fund the psychologists through the grant for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, therefore not impacting the budget, just like we did with Esser for high school counselor, and then build that into the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. So this is an ask right now of a plus one, knowing that we would be bringing back in twenty-four, twenty-five, any additional needs. I'll go through these next three, they're kind of related and then we can stop for some questions. Elementary emotional support is another area that we've looked at. This is an area where you can look to straight numbers and you can look at caseload. Obviously, the needs of the kids could be vastly different, but we do look at this in terms of caseloads. And you can see over the last five years, we've sometimes had two teachers, sometimes three. We went down to one this year and I believe we started the year with like eight. We thought that, you know, it was a very good caseload. But it has grown across this particular year, we're now up to fourteen, which is higher than where we like to be in a district-wide emotional support program. So given that and knowing the needs and the students that are being evaluated now, we are recommending one additional emotional support teacher moving into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that, that is housed at Evergreen Elementary. And then the last one that we spoke about was the high school special education. We've really been spending a lot of time on this, particularly since you approved the program planning where we removed the academic levels in English and social studies at the high school, knowing that that would allow us to move towards more natural proportions, which means that the percentage of special education students in the gen ed classroom would mirror the percentage of students in the whole building. That's around fifteen percent for the high school, that's not realistic for us. We're targeting around thirty to thirty-five. That is actually, though, half of where we're currently at. We have classes with seventy to seventy-five percent special education students. So we're really working on natural proportions. We're also working on effective co-teaching, we've seen the positive benefits of that. Not every student needs co-teaching and by no means do these numbers reflect that every special ed student is in a co-taught class. The chart on the right simply shows you that based upon course requests and applying natural proportions or closer to, we need to have five additional sections of co-taught just across the four core sections, courses next year. That drives out one additional teacher just to add those five co-taught sections. The other piece that we throw into that mix is the teaching load that a high school teachers carry. Teachers in the four core areas teach five periods per day. They have their prep, they have their lunch and they have a duty period in there. High school special education teachers teach six periods per day. They have their prep and their lunch, plus they manage a caseload of maybe fifteen to twenty, maybe a little higher at times. And they have to interact with multiple subjects, multiple teachers who are teaching those. So we would really like to have them be down to five teaching periods per day, like their counterparts in the core areas. And that, that extra period, that duty period would really be a time to allow them to work on their IEPs or case management or touch base with students or progress monitor, all those other things that they need to do. Just simply looking at that alone and decreasing to five, that drives out two and a half teachers. So we are actually requesting three high school special education teachers to be added for next school year to reduce that teaching load as well as incorporate those additional co-taught sections. So let me show you how it comes together. So in the first column, you see the level, the second column is the projected staffing change. So I'm going to come back to under elementary, it says Evergreen grade four. That was a plus one due to class sizes. We have now crossed that off because we're valuing the Evergreen emotional support as a higher priority than the fourth grade numbers, but I will come back to that. So you'll see, we added the emotional support then at the elementary and we have the minus two Spanish, assuming that the board approves the recommendations and certainly you may not. The middle school has the minus four, we have the plus one for the sixth grade. has the minus four. We have the plus one for the sixth grade. The high school, I mentioned to you, there's a health and PE position that we do not need to replace due to a retirement. Then the ads are the high school counselor, and the transition coordinator is still there. And now we put the three special ed positions there. And then under the district, we are valuing the ELD specialist and the psychologist position over the inclusion facilitator. So we've now removed that from the table and put the ELD specialists and the psych, but we have the psych proposed to be funded through a grant. So when you just do pure numbers then and take the psychologist out of that, because that's not budgetary monies, it is a plus two. So we started out the presentation tonight at a plus one. And all of these changes, although it seemed like there was quite a few of them and lots of asks, is really adding one additional staff member to that. And Mr. Weaver's going to talk about what that could look like in the budget when he gets to his part of the presentation. I do want to point out, though, because I know some of you pay very close attention to our class size numbers, and I appreciate that, we have three areas that we continue to watch in the elementary. Evergreen's fourth grade, the teachers and the principal are advocating very heavily that that class, currently at 94 students projected, we are currently projecting that we would stay at four sections. You can see that that puts our class sizes at 23 to 24. Our guidelines are 20 to 23. They are guidelines. They're not set in stone. So we could stay at the four, or if we went to five sections, you see what that would be. We have similar concerns with Schwanxville's grade four. We're looking at that particular group. They are currently in three sections. They are within class size guidelines at three, but they're on the upper end of that. So you can see what that change would be. And then I mentioned kindergarten. We currently have nine kindergarten teachers, not including K-plus, and we are currently projecting seven. So what we'd like to do with these areas is keep an eye on them, give it another month, see how things shake themselves out. There may be two positions in the elementary that are not needed for kindergarten that could be reallocated to either the Evergreen or the Schwanxville. So we'd like to see a little bit as we move forward in the next two months what that looks like. Yes, Dr. Campley?
I just want to advocate strongly that I am with the teachers on this one for both Evergreen and Schwanxville. I don't think there's an elementary teacher out there that will not say that the social-emotional impact that these students have at this point, we're seeing things at the elementary level that we haven't seen in 20 years. And the benefits of having a smaller class size where those teachers can build rapport, relationships, and work with students who may be having some behavioral difficulties is astronomical. And to say that a teacher's going to do that effectively in a class that is 24, potentially 25 students, and I know we have a class that is 25 already, it's just not fair to the teacher, it's not fair to the students, and it's not fair to the overall class as a whole trying to build a classroom community when there's that much going on within it. It's just too much. So I'm definitely a proponent of both of those classes getting an additional section.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments at all about the staffing? There is an action item 4.05. I don't recall exactly. It is approval, it's the elementary Spanish is on for approval next week, as that is important in our shifting, if that's the direction the board's going to move in, in terms of shifting staff around. Other comments or thoughts?
Where, just to keep it on the table and keep it, our vision on it, where are we looking and planning for that full-day kindergarten?
Yeah, really good question.
Watching out for it or being aware that it's on the horizon?
So we are intending to have an action plan for the first semester, I'll say, of next year, so that we are able to present to you all of the information, the feasibility of that with personnel, with facilities, and that hopefully, I'm targeting January or February to be able to present to the board a recommendation. Once that would be approved, our intention, if it is to recommend full-day K, would be that we would implement in the 2425 school year. So one more school year of half-day, and then the next year would be full-day, if that's the recommendation.
And to keep us all in the conversation, is it going to be mandated, mandated that there be a full-day kindergarten?
To my knowledge, no. I wish I had the crystal ball to say whether that would happen or not, but to this point, it has not been.
Governor Shapiro has talked about it being mandated. It's not in the current budget, but it's something that he has talked about on his platform, but can't predict what the legislature will do.
Good question. Anything else? Okay. Anything from the public about staffing? Any comments?
Heidi Brown from Lower Frederick. And I worked at the school for over 20 years. So I've been in the classroom and I've been in special ed. And I just want to reiterate too, what Dr. Campley mentioned about advocating for the teachers and having the numbers of the students in a classroom being on that higher end. It makes a huge difference. I am, so with advocating for the teachers to have smaller classroom sizes, it makes it very difficult for the teachers to do their job, to make connections with the students, which is very important. And the same with special education. We need to get the classroom sizes down. The workload that these teachers take on is astronomical. They need to make the connection with the students. That is so very important. They need, we need to get these kids caught up, and we're not doing that if the workload is overwhelming. We need to take the time and really work through this, but the kids need smaller class, the teachers need smaller classroom sizes. And it's just to be in there and to see that firsthand, even if we're staying in that higher-end guideline, it's too much. We're not making the progress that we could make.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Shona McGee, Skipback. I just want to second what Ms. Brown said. I was a paraprofessional here in the high school and also at West in the learning support and autistic support classroom. To have extra teachers, extra hands in there to reduce their caseloads and give them more time to work on their IEPs is highly important for them to connect with their students. I highly recommend it. I stand for it. Thank you for listening.
All right. So from the Education Committee, then, we are requesting, there's three items to be added to the consent agenda should the board agree with that. And then I just also wanted to bring back, we really were hoping that you would give us some indication tonight if we should be adding the ELD position creation to next week or holding that till May, so that we can maybe get a jump on that. And I also would really like to request, since it is curriculum season, I know, like for us, it's like Christmas, too, but it's curriculum season, and there's so much to share, that I would really appreciate the opportunity to have an Education Ad Hoc Committee meeting in April and one in May. They are both, the dates are there, that I am suggesting they're about a week or two weeks prior to the board meeting. It gives a really good opportunity for the curriculum supervisors to share information, solicit feedback before we come to the board, and then hopefully we can be succinct here.
Yeah, if we could just make sure there are no other meetings on the 24th and 30th.
I believe that Ms. Widener checked.
The IU or any of those.
Oh, those, okay. Okay, we can do that. All right. So any conversation on adding the ELD positions to the agenda for next week?
I'm in support of that. Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Me as well. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Item 4.02 will be the motion to approve the K through five report card. Any further discussion, or can we move that to consent? Okay, we'll put that on consent. Item 4.03 will be a motion to approve land and building audits, to approve an agreement with Cool Heron for land and building audit of all Perkium and Valley Buildings for the purpose of assessing school-based assets and outdoor field experience opportunities at a cost of $2,500 for seven schools funded by the 2022 to 2023 Ready to Learn Grant. Any discussion? Okay, we'll put that on consent. 4.04 will be a motion to approve online credits, which we actually already approved this in March. The change is that we had previously approved a cost range of 250 to 280, and it's being adjusted to 270 to 300 per course. Any discussion? Okay, put that on consent. And item 4.05 will be the motion to eliminate the elementary Spanish program. Any discussion? Are we ready to put that in consent, or do we need to wait?
Personally, I'd like to see, like, hear what Mr. Weaver had to say, if there's a way to financially move things around before we, like, I kind of want to see how it all flushes out personally.
So let's leave 4.05 off of consent. And 4.06 was the enrollment report. Do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Smith?
I do not.
That concludes Section Four.
Section 5.01, Finance Committee of the Whole, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. So tonight, we have a packed agenda. Mr. Fabrizio, if you would come up here for the beginning part. We will move along, perhaps. There we go. Okay, so very, very long menu. We'll try to piece these together and move forward. So first and foremost, you have the update from Mr. Mallory on ESCO 4.0 and ESCO 5.0. One point to mention that our natural gas pipeline, we've met our contractor now through PICO. We actually have a meeting scheduled April 12th to get that whole project moving along. So that's a good sign. Any questions or comments about that? Okay. Any questions from the community? Okay. Mr. Fabrizio, why don't you update us on the concession stand?
Sure thing. So this is our finalized design that's going out to Breslin Engineering, as well as consolidate it for the mechanicals, two ADA restrooms, where the concession stand end is now, storage area. We're going to be revamping a couple doors and then adding sinks to the concession area, storage units, a fridge, and kind of like a table for crockpots, things of that nature. And then a serving window on the, two serving windows on the end.
So this motion is to actually approve GKO to help move forward with this process. This is the design. They'll help us issue and review the RFPs when they go out and bring the total package forward to us. That is a not-to-exceed cost of $20,000. Yes. Ms. White.
I appreciate the work that you did to revise the plan, especially with the incorporation of the ADA bathrooms. I think that was really necessary for the overall stadium. The question that I have is that there were previous conversations about the potential to do some of this work in-house. Is that all going to be part of the total package, or have you shifted to have it done actually through an RFP?
We've shifted now to have it done through an RFP based upon the conversation that we've had previously with Mr. Subers involved, just to make sure that we could not follow up on that process. So unfortunately, we could not.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. Thank you for the diligence.
It was worth the effort. Yes, absolutely. Okay, any questions on that? Again, that'll be for Breslin Architects, not to exceed $20,000. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Okay, thank you. All right, moving forward, a separate component of that, one of the end results of the additional deep dive, was the conversation about how do we break up this project. Mr. Fabrizio has done a pretty good job of working with SJ Thomas, that's our KPN vendor. And we have a board motion to approve SJ Thomas to move forward for the asphalt, which is outside of the concession stand, to move forward. That is Finance Committee of the Whole on the Board Agenda 5.03. Any questions on that one?
Just the assumption that that will not be completed until after the concession stand is completed?
So we can move forward with the asphalt part of that, but the concession stand will need to be delayed a little bit because we've got the entire RFP process to go forward.
And there won't be any disruption to the asphalt with the construction that needs to happen?
That's, that is correct. And we made sure that when we separated the asphalt, that there would not be any issues with the fiber going to the scoreboard or any of that stuff. That's a good question, though. Thank you. And it speaks to some of the logistics stuff that Mr. Fabrizio is doing behind the scenes to help make sure that all of these projects happen and they don't cross each other. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Fabrizio.
So the press box on the home side, there was some concern about the safety being on top where the guardrail is. So we proposed to have Monco fence come in and put a four-foot galvanizer, black chain link fence all around the top to prevent anyone from slipping through the cracks and falling. We also have to address the roof up there, which is not leaking, but it's due to have a new surface put on, and that's from Exile Home Improvement, their local contractor. We did review with other vendors, and these guys were the most economical.
So we actually grouped that together. So you'll see in Finance Committee of the Whole, 5.04, the two different vendors in one motion. Again, just reaching out and trying to adjust and address the issues on the stadium press box. That was part of the process. Any questions on that from the board? Any questions from the community? Okay, thank you. Okay, FCS Base.
Okay, so here, we're going to be adding a restroom in the bottom-left corner. There's actually room to do it. There's a crawl space under this room, and the plumbing can support it. So this room would basically be like a total rehab, new flooring, new ceiling tiles, HVAC unit, and then redoing the kitchen area that you see in the top middle. It's going to be kind of like a square where the instructor can teach and kids can gather around. And then there'll be, to the left, you can't really see it, it's right above the bathroom, another little kitchen area for kids to do work in. Currently, there's about four separate kitchens in there now. They will be discarded, and then they'll have rolling carts where they can make their coffee and serve it out of there. And to the bottom right, you'll see that there's like a half wall that's going to kind of be like a calm-down area where kids can go in, and if they need to relax a little bit, they can hang out in there. The laundry room will remain. That's on the top left, through the doorway there. They do have a washer and dryer. That will need to be updated at some point. It's starting to rust out, so it's on borrowed time.
And again, this motion is for engineering services through GKO to provide these services at a cost not to exceed $13,460 as proposed. Any questions? Ms. White?
So this room, there's a substantial amount of built-in woodwork, cabinetry all along the walls. There's counters there. This seems like it's really bare of a lot of surfaces. So can you talk a little bit, this is obviously just the fixture pieces of things, right? So can you talk a little bit about the plan that would be like step two in terms of outfitting the room? Are you prepared to do that?
I think Dr. Boyd may be.
Okay. Just, I just know how much, I mean, this is a very large room in the building. And so the amount of cabinetry that's coming out, like-
It's going to be a flexible space?
A flex space. Okay, great. Oh, thank you.
This is all part of our transition services. So this room would then be, become like our independent living apartment-type programming. So we know that we would outfit with probably like a couch, you know, some furniture. So we haven't gotten to that part of the design yet, and we will need to do that. But this would allow us to continue with really the coffee cart program and some of those other, those other aspects of programming that are underway. But we do need to convert the space itself first so that we can build from there.
Understood. Thank you.
What happens with all the stuff in there? Is there, are there any opportunities to sell any of it? I mean, even just-
Have you been in that room?
Yes.
Okay.
And I mean, even just, well, regardless of talking about the built-in stuff, I mean, we found like six KitchenAid mixers in there. Those, I mean, the fact that these things are just laying around our district, not being used.
So if we can't reallocate them, we can put them on Munisabid, which is our government auction site, and someone can buy them, another district, and put them to good use if we can't use them.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community on this project?
Hold on one second.
Yes?
Do you know about how long it's going to take to finish that?
So the question was, how long will it take for this process to get done, including construction, I presume, until we can actually get in there? construction, I presume, until we can actually get in there?
I'm saying three months.
So would it be done over the summer, or would it go into-
So we have, we're in the design phase now, so once the plans are approved, then GKO will take about a month to produce the plans. We need mechanical plans as well, because there is plumbing involved. Then we have to pull permits with the township. That usually takes about two weeks. And then lining up contractors, it has to go out either through KPN, which is the Keystone Purchasing Network, or we have to go out to bid. So if we go the KPN route, we can probably get a contractor pretty quick. But if we go out to bid, it may take another month or so.
It just concerns me to put the students that this is detrimental to their transitioning out of the classroom, so.
I'm not sure if there's another space they can use.
There's not.
No?
That was the classroom that I was in when I worked here.
Okay.
So just to clarify, our goal is to get this done over the summer and be ready for the start of the school year. If it's not, then we'll have to go to Plan B. But that is the goal. Okay. Other capital project updates. So, Mr. Fabrizio, you want to hit upon the high school counseling, and I'll take the auditorium.
Sure. We're still working through the high school counseling center, working with the staff, Dr. Russell, and students to get their input on how they envision the space. We will need a formal bid packet. There's some HVAC work that has to be done in there, as well as some other mechanicals, like fire system, life safety, those types of things. Other capital projects, the card access project, that's just about wrapped up. We're 99% done on that. We're going to run through each building this week with the contractor to test everything and formulate a punch list if anything needs to be addressed. And then we're starting the re-core on Wednesday. I received all the 184 keys today and the cores. So we'll, we anticipate that taking about two days to complete for all-new exterior door keys.
Okay, this piece for the Middle School East Auditorium, we brought that forward last, last month. Mr. Ganesh carried the ball on that, brought forward for review, FCTW 5.06, to upgrade the audiovisual capabilities at Middle School East Auditorium, ZNH Technologies through Co-Stars at a cost of $40,814. And again, that's capital project monies. And our timeline is that we have board approval, and then we implement actually in July of 2023 in time, again, for the start of the school year for '23-'24. Any, yes, Ms. White?
So with regards to, to this, this is fine, but this is just the one component of the, the built-in, the projector screen and the live stream capability. Was there any conversation, further conversation about the soundboard and the microphones that are, that are there?
Yes, there has been. There's been several different meetings between Mr. Ganesh and Dr. Russell. She's led some of these meetings. So, Dr. Russell, I don't know if you want to add?
Yeah, I can add. We, we have done, Mr. Ganesh and I have conducted some walkthroughs with some representatives of our sound and light boards, music department. And there are some additional needs that we need to debrief on still before we might bring forward, but absolutely. And there are, there are items that we are prioritizing and trying to figure out, how do we get some things in order? Because this is really the main facility for our school district, and some real concerns were brought forward to us this year from the individuals who run the sound and light board. So we are organizing from that conversation and what they've shared with us, and we'll prioritize and then bring it to the board and see if we can knock some of those things out actually before the school year starts.
So that was exactly, that was my next question, is, you know, on the tail end of this year's musical play season, I just feel like it would be very, very nice for the kids to go into the next season with some better equipment.
And I will just piggyback on that. I went to all three of the, the Mean Girl productions, and on the last night, there was definitely some mic flickering with one of the lead cast members that, I don't know that everybody would have picked up on it, but being there for three nights in a row, I could tell that it was kind of doing a little bit of funky stuff. So, and I know that that's not the first time that that's happened either. There's been situations in the past. So I do appreciate, I agree, if it could be fixed and ready to go for next season. They spend so many hours and they put so much time and effort into it. It's just, it's only fair for them to be able to put on a production and not have to worry about whether or not they're going to be able to give their, their best production, and then they get this glitch that messes it all up.
So to that end, just if you were talking to vendors, maybe at West, we look at that as well, because I know, I know the conditions at East are favorable to the sound conditions at West. They were a little rough, I felt.
We have done some investigating out at West. We've discovered some things about the equipment. We do have some, some solutions that we believe can work and get that up to where it needs to be. So we're working on that, too. Thank you.
Okay, so any questions on 5.06 as proposed? Any questions from the community? Okay, thank you. Middle School East Flooring. Administration is recommending the replacement of existing carpeting in the Counseling Center and the office in Middle School East through Franklin Flooring. Again, this will be through Co-Stars, and this is Middle School East Main Office and the Counseling Center with the prices as listed, and it would be covered by capital project funds. Again, it's another improvement for an area that really needed a lot of help in the Counseling Center and the Main Office, and it will be replacement with the LVT that you see here in the library. Any questions on that? Any questions from the community on that?
Actually, Jim, I'm sorry. I, I know Evergreen still needs to be done, too, and that's already been approved. So will all of this be able to happen this summer? Will we be able to get all of it in?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, any other questions from the community on that one? Okay, thank you. Some quick capital project updates. Again, I don't want to steal Joe's thunder, but the, you know, the high school auditorium continues to be worked on. That's a picture of the scaffolding that's been up. They've been moving that around to address all of the lighting issues up there. They've got to, remember, they got to take stuff down, and then in order to put the new stuff in, which is great. And of course, all the seats are down out. The LED scoreboard installation, you can drive by. The scoreboard is here. It's on our property. They're working out some of the other logistics associated with that. So we continue to move forward on that one. And the music rooms, we continue to update, and we've requested an additional quote for some additional considerations, working with the music department, and, and all of the different variables. Joe, anything to add? Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Fabrizio while he's up? Up, go ahead, Ms. White?
I'm sorry. You know, this is my favorite part of the presentation. So with the scoreboard, will it be in place that and ready for graduation? Is that the target? Awesome.
Mr. Door?
Did we find out any more about whether we can advertise on it yet? Have we gotten a response from the township?
Mr. Subers?
My understanding is the application's been finalized and will be filed. If it's not filed yet, yet, it will be filed this week. I would give it an, an easy month or so. We have to get on the township's agenda.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Okay, we've worked over the past couple of months to make sure that we've had enough information associated with an RFQ that went out for grass cutting for the summertime, specific for satellite groups of South Elementary School and Skipak Elementary School. All the other grass cutting and mulching and all that kind of stuff would come through our own grounds and maintenance. We issued the RFQ. We received them on March 27th, and you can see the differences between the three different vendors. Mr. Fabrizio double-checked a lot of those items to make sure that those are the proper amounts and valued properly. And TJ's Outdoor Maintenance is recommended, moving forward, at a cost not to exceed $15,750. Again, just for grass cutting at South and Skipak. Any questions on that? That's FCTW 5.08. Any questions from the community? Okay, thank you. All right, real quick, we've got a couple of quick hitters now. North Monco passed their budget for '23-'24. We have to approve that. Our increase is 1.48% or $28,000 over the '22-'23 tuition rate, standard operating practice. And so we bring it forward, and the board approves that. Any questions on that one? Okay? Any questions from the community on that? Similar fashion, the YMCA contracts, we do contract with Freedom Valley and Indian Valley YMCA to provide the before and after-school programs at the buildings listed. We are increasing our, oh, 3.4%. That should be 4.1%. I'm sorry. That, the dollar figure is 4.1%, but I should have increased that 3.4 to 4.1, and that mirrors our Act 1 index. So I apologize for that. It is a 4.1% increase over the current year. I did float these contracts out to both Freedom Valley and Indian Valley, and they are in agreement with those figures. They're working behind the scenes on their, their different administration to let us, to tell us that everything should be okay. All right? Again, standard operating practice for us. And again, it's 4.1% increase year to year. Any questions on that? Any questions from the community? Okay. Which brings us to the item tonight, the school police officers. There goes Joe. Dean, would you come up? Okay, so tonight, to facilitate the conversation and move it forward, to look at the hiring of seven SPOs for the '23-'24 year, the board is well aware that we do have $1.4 million in the budget. We've had that in since December as we formulated and began our budget process and our budget journey. And the, the recommendation is to move forward with the hiring of seven SPOs and convert the eight current SPOs to six SSOs as part of that budget process. That brings our total to in-house security, again, as part of the conversation, to 13.0 positions. And then to move forward, the total net cost of these, again, the board has seen these, $1.3 million. The gross is $1.469, but we do have an offset for the FICA and PISERS reimbursement of $145,000, which creates that netted figure of $1,324,099. Costs include salaries, benefits, two vehicles, and accessories for security uses. Additionally, moving forward with these positions, this would create one SPO or armed for each school building. There would be direct oversight of staff. That includes expectations and consistent training, flexibility for scheduling to address various events, and second shift concerns that we currently have, weekends as well, and provide staff to help offset sub-needs as we move forward with this total process, to continue with our in-house at any given time moving forward. And again, we will still need to contract with an outside security service, which we do have an RFP ready to go, as far as additional weekend coverages and school events or special activities that we might have moving forward. For a, a more in-depth question and concern as far as budget goes, here's a breakdown. We do have a multi-year budget presentation that we've had for quite some time. I just wanted, we've condensed the big, long spreadsheet that we have internally that we borrowed from Springford when we began this process. And now, what you're seeing here is a listing of the salaries and benefits for those 13 positions, $1.197 million, two vehicles, misspelled, I guess, sorry about that, of $60,000 per vehicle. That's an estimate for $120,000. That, that would go into the '23-'24 budget, and then that would become part of our ongoing 10-year facil, or 10-years capital asset process that we would look at moving forward. Uniforms, body armor, the initial lump sum for '23-'24 of weapons and accessories, which would include a handgun, rifle, and ammunition for the first year at $24,690. Radio needs, county batteries, as move forward with Mr. Miller's input, certainly, on all of these levels. $65,500 for that very first year to get those county radios up to, up to speed, and then over the next several years. You can see that. Insurance, training, and other miscellaneous items, $20,000 in the first year. That's how we come up to that total gross cost of $1.469 million. You can see the offset there as shown. That's how we come up to the $1,324,099. Moving forward into '24-'25 and throughout, through '27-'28, you can see that there's a drop in '24-'25, simply because we're not repurchasing additional vehicles, as we have discussed at this point in time. And so there's a drop-off, and then it steadily builds up mainly because of the increases in salaries and benefits moving forward. So we'll open that up for conversation.
So I see rifles on there. Is that for the squad cars, or is there going to be weapons lockers on each campus?
That would be a determination to be made by all of us collectively about what we're comfortable with.
I think this kind of brings it back then again, that we're being asked to vote on something that we don't have all of the specifics hashed out on, and that makes me uncomfortable. I feel like this is such a big decision, and we talked at the last meeting about, does it really need to happen in April? And the answer was, the sooner the better, but it doesn't have to happen in April. And yet, here we are, sitting here at April 4th, or April 3rd, rather, talking about voting on something, and we don't have specifics hashed out. And being the seriousness of this and the discomfort within the community, I feel like we really need to be able to say, this is what a policy's going to look like. This is the trainings that are going to happen. This is how we're going to incorporate DEI. This is how we're going, how often the school psychs and the counselors are going to be meeting with the, the SPOs in order to talk about, you know, who, what are the mental health needs of the building? Are there students that they need to be aware of and things to look out for? I just, there's so many unanswered questions, and I don't know why we're rushing to do something as significant as voting on this, the, this heavily of an expenditure when we don't know. And I honestly, I don't have the trust that it's going to go as smoothly and as well as what Springford has. I think we need to first see, I don't know, I just, I have a lot of reservations. And again, it's not that I'm against SPOs, because I told you before, you swung me from one direction to the other. I, I can see the benefit of it. I'm just really worried that we're doing this really hastily without any real planning. You know, we've, this has only been a couple of months. The, it hasn't even been two months that the community's been made aware of this. It's just, it's uncomfortable for me.
I mean, I can respect Dr. Campley's opinion. However, I mean, I don't think this is something we can wait any more time for. If we spend the next six months going through every little minutia, I mean, your job is to do this, is to set this up. We have a roadmap to do it from all the schools surrounding us. We have bipartisan support from our elected leaders. We got two letters. We got one from Joe Cerisi, and I don't remember who the other one was from. Donna Sharon. I can, I'll do anything to protect my children, anything. So to turn on the news one day and see that, well, we were sitting here talking day after day, going through all the details. I mean, we have them, we have the budget. We have a roadmap to follow that other schools have done, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It would break my heart if we just, if we kept talking about this and something bad happened. I know that's not their only role, but to me, it's probably the biggest thing, protecting our kids.
So I think that, you know, I, I agree with what both of you have said, that I think there's especially in our community, a lot of anxiety, given that there was another school shooting not too long ago. And I think, as parents, there's always that stress of, you know, I'm sending my kid to school, and are they going to be safe? So I, I get that, and I get that there's a bit of urgency here. My question is, you know, again, I had brought up at the last meeting, do we need to start with seven, or can we start a little smaller? And what I'm hearing is the biggest concern for families that want these things, and I hear this now, too, is that we want to make sure our buildings are secure. I asked, you know, last time, what's the main benefit of having this? And the answer was, to protect our buildings, to protect from an outside intruder. And so I feel like if that's our goal, we could start a little smaller and have two, three, four officers patrolling our campuses, making sure the perimeter's secure, while we're also working on other safety features of our buildings. I'm not sure that jumping to seven, having one in each building, accomplishes what we're saying we want to accomplish. I, I hear a lot of other benefits being talked about, you know, they can make connections with students, they can, you know, go in and do other things, bring a guitar, buy a prom dress. We've heard all these wonderful things, but that's not really what we should be starting out with. I think if we want to start out with safety, sure, let's do that. Let's secure our buildings, let's secure our campuses. But can we do that starting on a smaller scale? Can we do that starting with, you know, two vehicles and a few officers, and then build from there? Like, someone said the Springford program has been built over 10 years. They didn't go from zero to what they have now in a- go from zero to what they have now in two months. So I'd still like to talk about why that shift, because it seemed like last time, we were thinking about starting smaller and then building, and then on the agenda today, I saw the seven, I was a little bit surprised that we went from that discussion to this right away. So I'd like to talk about that again, and do we need to start with this option?
Wait, then I'll go.
So going back two hours ago, or more, to your superintendent's report, Dr. Russell, what you laid out, leading with foundational information to this slide, I think was more along the lines of what we've been talking about in terms of the due diligence that we're really looking for, from stakeholder input, and student input, and obviously, staff input. I am concerned that, you know, to Dr. Koller's point, that we've gone from, well, we're going to talk about it, and we're going to work on, I think, one of the previous speakers, this app, what time is it? At the beginning of public comment, talked about a bipartisan effort, which is what I said as it was, when it was proposed the very first time in our executive session, is that I really feel like a decision to protect our buildings, our teachers, our staff, and most importantly, our students, needs to be a unanimous bipartisan effort. And I, and I feel as though, especially, for example, after the due diligence of the curriculum team, putting through all of the thought that's required to get something from, from inception to implementation, I don't understand why this would be any different if it's just as important. And so, again, going back to my comments from last month about our facilities, I feel as though there is still a lot of work to be done for our buildings. I think Mr. Fabrizio has done a world of improvement to our buildings since he's come on board with our district, and I think that that is moving in the right direction. But again, I don't understand why there is this all or nothing approach. So, given your superintendent's report, Dr. Russell, was it your recommendation that this be put on the agenda for April's approval?
This was a combined recommendation, board leadership and administration, to appear on the agenda tonight.
Even after your presentation with regards to the foundational work that's still happening, and last month, administration recommends that this gets approved tonight for seven?
Not tonight.
Tuesday.
The consideration was this month. And honestly, we talked last month about whether April or May, certainly, it helps administration to know what's happening with the budget as we put our pieces together with staffing. It can wait until May, I think we said that too last month. I don't know that it, it's imperative to happen tonight, there were comments during, Tuesday, thank you, there were comments during last month's meeting about April or May, and advantages and disadvantages that were shared around both.
And then it went to policy, and we talked about it more, and I thought that we were all on the same page after the policy meeting, that there was still more work to be done, and that we were going to be receiving that additional foundational feedback. And you did go over some of that feedback tonight, but I just, I'm concerned as though, again, why it's this all or nothing approach.
So, you know, I'll share, and I went back and listened to the recording from March 13th, because I know this question has come up from some others, to me an email. I, I said in March, and I continue to feel okay with a transition towards one school police officer per building, but staff that I have heard from are advocating for seven. So I have shifted, and I'm, and I'm in support, honestly, I could go either way, I said this last month. This is the part of the situation that I have contemplated, but staff that have spoken out have advocated for one per building, let's do it right if we're going to do it, and not just from one person. So my efforts are to support them, however, I can absolutely live with a transition in, and I understand that, I understand the why of the comments that are being presented in a start like that.
So, you know, we're lucky in this area to have representatives that have really lived in the school board. Joe Cerisi spent a long time at Springford, and Donna Sharon is continuing, she's still on the board at Salerton. Joe is a Democrat, Donna is a Republican, I happen to have a relationship with both Representative Sharon and Cerisi. You know, what strikes me is Joe says one of his regrets is that they didn't go all-in right away and get one in every school. And in Springford, if you listen to the SPOs, they're still not there, they don't know why, they want to be there, they're not happy because they're not there, and the same situation in Salerton. So, you know, when I hear two, two former school board members who were on the school board for a long time, who have now been blessed by their, by their citizens to be elevated to the role and represent, you know, Montgomery County and Harrisburg, say, you have to do it, and do it once, and get it all done right away, because that's a mistake that they made in their respective school districts, I listen to that, because they've been there in the past, they made these tough decisions, and that's what they did. From a budgetary standpoint, it's not a budget item to me. In 202425, if you stayed with option A, the differential between A and D looks to be about $8,000, a .000245 percent of a total budget of 120 million dollars. It's a drop in the bucket, and I don't know how you compromise what school. So you have people in Skidback who might say, we should start slow, so start in another school and see how that goes. Well, that's not, you know, that's not really how it works. What school, if we started with three, what school would be, would we compromise? I think unfortunately, a lot of the conversations really have to do, and this is why I don't, you know, it, it's, you know, you can't have unanimous, because there are some board, there could be some board members that just are adamant that they would never want a weapon, a weapon in, a weapon like a handgun or a rifle in a school district, and I would respect that. So, you know, saying, if it's not nine to nothing, it shouldn't pass, I don't look at it that way. I think there is bipartisan support, there are, there are people who are very left-wing who are in support of this, and there are people who are very right-wing who are not in support of this. That is literally the definition of bipartisan. You have people on both sides who are normally on opposite ends, agreeing with, with different things, and we have a Democratic rep and a Republican rep, both former school board directors of their respective school districts who sent the school board notices, speaking in favor of Board 8.07. That's, that's where on that. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, so that every teacher, every staff member, every school, every, every building that we have is secured to what we think would be the best in our ability. And what we've learned from the Salerton project, and what we've learned from the Springford project, is as this continues to build through policy, and through efficacy, and through efficiency, is that in the long run, they are more than just individuals with a gun. They are people that we can go to when we have a problem at home, there's someone that we could go to when there's a bully that's picking on them, or there's an issue that they don't feel comfortable talking to someone they're about, or there's someone who could say to the counselor, Mr. Door, Tina in room 17 today, she just looks stressed, where, you know, I think you should have a counselor talk to them, there's another, there are another eyes and ears on the situation, and, and they are trained for that. These are not Joe Schmoes that are being picked off the street to be, to, to be put in these positions. So if it takes, Mr. Miller, sir, if it takes you seven months to get seven, that's your job. That's your job, your role and your responsibility. And you would be tasked with the superintendent, Dr. Russell, and everyone else in the cabinet, to make sure that we hire the best people, and you would be held ultimately responsible if you hired the wrong person. And if that takes you three days to hire seven, that's great. If he takes you six months to hire seven, that's, that's what it is. But we should be letting you know that we are in support of one for one. We should be letting the union know, we heard the union president, if you're going to do it, you're going to do it right. We should let our constituents know, we've heard from the Democratic leadership and the Republican leadership in Harrisburg, so we should do it and do it right.
I guess my concern has never been about whether or not, you know, it takes you seven months to hire someone, my concern are the, the details of it. You know, in one breath, you're saying handgun, and the next breath, well, we have to figure out whether or not it's going to be rifles too. You know, we don't know, what is the plan, how often do you consider that these officers are going to be working with your psychologists and your counselors? I think those are not nitty-gritty details, they're really important details to make sure that our students feel safe. We have students, you know, black and brown families, and marginalized youth, who want to know that they're going to be working and having officers that are trained and have been really well-vetted with, in, and have those relationships within the school with the counselors and the psychologists on a regular basis. And that it's not like, oh, okay, well, you had your three days training at the beginning, and maybe you touch base with your counselors once we, and I think these are some things and some details that the community is looking for that would help put them at ease. And again, I agree with you, Mr. Door, I would be heartbroken if something happened, and we didn't have something in place, and we could have, you know, it could have averted a crisis. But we also know that sometimes you can have every best situation in place, and it still happens. So if we're going to do it, I definitely want to do it right, and I want to make sure that the details are ironed out. You know, and again, not every little nitty-gritty, but the big ones, like DEI and cultural proficiency, and all the things that I heard policy talk about when I watched the video, that I'm not seeing presented here, and more discussion, I think, needs to be had on that.
Aren't these things that can be done in the process? So we give you the green light for this program, seven police officers. I mean, aren't the policies, some of the programs Dr. Campley's referring to, I mean, this is going to be a living, breathing organism. We're going to be making changes to it as we go, what works, what doesn't work. I mean, we're never going to have all the answers to every question, and then decide to implement. There's still going to be questions afterwards. I mean, how long do you think it's going to take? I guarantee it's not going to be three days.
No, it'll take probably several months, you know, till we get up to the beginning of next year's school term. You know, maybe we'll only have two or three people on board at that point. And as we progress, excuse me, as we progress through it, and as we, we take a look at what we're doing, I'm sure there will be changes and things that we can tweak or adjust. I've been reading through a guide offered by the Department of Justice from their community or in police services, or COPS is their acronym ironically, for school resource officers. And just, some of the things that we're talking about, Dr. Campley, to your point, we talk here in this particular article about the points of specialized training they recommend. I mean, there's 24 total on here, all, all different aspects of, I'm sure what you're familiar with, in your role, as we all are, as we talk about working through with students. I look also at, at their, their short guide of recommendations for school safety, they list 10 of them, and nine of them we've accomplished or already have in progress, and the only piece of that that's missing is having that protective factor with law enforcement in our buildings. Whether that law enforcement is our own or someone else's, seems to be the only missing piece. But it will definitely be a work in progress.
So it sounds like, I mean, from a concept standpoint, we have a sound concept, and from what I'm hearing from other board members, this is something on the surface, it's agreed upon, maybe not 9-0, but fairly close. I mean, can you commit to work with other board members, policy committee, and so on, to make sure any questions that are residing are answered?
Oh, absolutely, and we've, we've been doing that, I've been poring over documents, Dr. Russell and I have shared extensive emails back and forth, Mr. Weaver and I are constantly looking at funding sources. One of the nice parts about this particular guide that comes from the Department of Justice is, by following that guide, we place ourselves in a better position for grant funding that they provide. And they're the major supplier of grant funding for these types of initiatives nationwide. So that would position us in a way that we would be better off than, let's say, other agencies that aren't quite as advanced in that regard. So I would be following that, the Nazaro policies, which I've mentioned to you before about training, and, you know, the guide, which, be happy to share that with you all in a link, that you can look through it, there's an incredible amount of data there. For me to bring it tonight would be a disservice to all of you, but there's a lot for us to consider. So to Dr. Campley's point, and to many of your concerns, yes, there's many more things that we're going to be doing, so it will be a work in progress as we move along.
So the proposal has us moving from eight SSOs to six. So what happens to two of our SSOs that are currently employed?
Well, the hope is, and I saw your question earlier today, is that the two that we already have that are law enforcement certified, we'll be able to make that transition. But again, that's taking them through the vetting process that we define, so you'll be involved in that process, hopefully our students and our community will be involved in that process. Do they find these candidates acceptable, is it something that Mr. Moran and I can discuss, and we can discuss as a whole? Are these people that are a fit for our community and what we want to try and do? So the hope is to get it there, through that.
Okay.
Not a guarantee.
That's the hope, but not the guarantee. And we're not in the habit of laying off people, so then, do we keep eight SSOs?
Decision we have to make.
Okay. And then, what are you thinking in terms of, so I'm assuming you want the seven armed SPOs at the school buildings during the day when students are there? So is that, and then, the high school, we generally have a couple of security here in addition, are then you picturing that some of our SSOs are, are second shift?
So there would have to be a split shift component, yes, and we, we talked a little bit about that, about the requirement for more of a presence in the afternoon when we're dismissing all of our buildings at nearly at the same time with traffic and, and other concerns, as well as that's the transitional time of day when we go to the contracted services. So some of our contracted providers will commit and do athletics, freeing up our personnel to do safety and security. So many other programs we use them for, is some of the summer programming, having those people available for those details, we're still going to have students in the building, so a conversation we can also have about some fluctuations in the number, as far as making it better, when I say that, is maybe employing several of these personnel at 210 days versus all of them at 260 days.
And I appreciate this, this breakdown. I'm curious how we have a number for the weapons and accessories, if we don't know yet what weapons we're going to be arming our police officers.
So we took an average number, so I, I did an informal survey of our neighboring jurisdictions that are doing this kind of work, and what they're spending and what they're doing. So those numbers are, are, you know, an average of that. You know, I certainly will be staying within the budget, Mr. Weaver will assure of that, and what we can get. And while these prices are based on current value and new devices of all kinds, whether it's, you know, paying for a new police car or vehicle, or paying for a new piece of equipment, there are ways that we can take advantage of the municipal bid process that Mr. Fabrizio mentioned, where maybe we can pick up used vehicles, and instead of getting two, maybe we can get four, or, you know, getting weapons that were traded in, there's nothing wrong with them, but some law enforcement agencies have it in their budget process that every so many years, they turn them over. They're perfectly fine, but there's equipment that they use that we could use. So those kinds of things also can be a savings to us, and we can offset that, hopefully, in a number of ways, again, to make this better for us.
Okay. And if we have one armed officer at each school, what would be the need for two vehicles?
So you posed an interesting question there, Mr. Weaver and I addressed that a little bit today. To have those officers available to respond to assist another officer, it would be ideal for us to have seven. So each officer equipped identically at each building, and, you know, that's the formula that we would like to get to, but to stay within the budget and to be wise about our money, we started out with those two, but if we can go to, let's say, that municipal platform, and we can get four for the same amount, I would get four right away, I'd recommend to you to do that, so we have four people at our mobile instead of just two. Or, we have one vehicle here, one of the security vehicles we already use, that we could also add into that mix.
Would they be able to use their private vehicles with lights on them to?
They would not be, the law prohibits it. So if you name someone a chief of police, they could get that authority. If you name someone the emergency manager of the school district, they could get that authority. But a lay officer, if you will, could not get that authority. What's that?
Do you have that authority?
If you were to give it to me, yeah, I could do that.
Okay. I'm, you know, I'm just, with all of the budgetary stuff that we've talked about, I'm looking for savings anywhere that, that we can find it. In terms of weapons, do, I know we've discussed that we haven't gotten into policy or that sort of thing, but storage of firearms, do the officers take them home with them? What's the protocol with that?
So I wouldn't want an officer to be present in public in uniform without it, first of all, so I would recommend they take them home, I mean, that's a policy that I followed throughout my career. I mean, that's a policy that I followed throughout my career. We should have some available storage here. So if an officer leaves midday for some unforeseen, or even a circumstance that they foresee, that we have a place for them to be stored. But that would be in an incredibly secure area. I'd have to work with Mr. Fabrizio about making that happen. So whether we have a, a safe and a safe room, et cetera, those are some kind of things that we can set up.
And is that included in the budget?
That would be through some of the extra accessories. And let me just give you an example. So you'll see handgun and rifle up there, and people have a concern over that. So when you asked me the question the other week about a rifle, and I said, well, yeah, I'd do that. If that were available to us as a protective factor and you thought it was appropriate and we agreed on it, I would do that. But I'm not coming in here saying I want every guy to carry a rifle right now, but I would want them to have a handgun to protect themselves and others. And that could be foreseen as a semi-automatic weapon, basically as fast as you could fire it, much like a rifle. So if we don't buy the rifle, or we forego buying a rifle for a year, or two, or five, we can take the money that would have otherwise been in the budget for that and maybe move it into a storage unit or something else. So there's a lot of fluctuations here, and there's a lot of questions that we still need to answer. I would not disagree with you.
So then, policy would be specific as to how they would need to store it at home?
Yep.
Because that's district property and we're liable for that?
Right.
Okay. So again, all of these questions, I, I think, lead us to, can we please have another month to talk about this and get some of these things in place so that we have those answers? Because I, I completely hear Mr. Dorr saying, we can't wait six months, but this is something we're not looking to put into place until next school year. So to give us one more month to go through these policies and really have a good idea of how we're going to work, I think, would be very helpful. The last question that I have as of right now is that several board members have asked for input from Mr. Willis on the creation of this school police force. Do we have that input from him?
So Mr. Willis has participated in some admin conversations that we have had, and Mr. Miller spoke to him directly today in response to some of those questions that came up again. I would prefer if Mr. Willis was here and would speak for himself. I am less comfortable speaking for him. However, he has offered some opinion, and he offered it to Mr. Miller today.
So the conversation that Mr. Willis and I had several weeks back, and again, today we repeated it when we were outside in the stadium, was his concern, and mine too, about, you know, the school-to-prison pipeline and what that looks like, and what can we do to be in front of that. So those are things I'd love to work through with Mr. Willis and others like him. We have a great advocate who actually lives in Skipback Township that I'd love to tap into. He's a former high-ranking official in the Pennsylvania State Police that speaks around the country on this very topic. And the fact that he's in our backyard, I think it would be beneficial of us to at least go and have a conversation, if not he individually, who he would recommend for us to have a conversation with. But I'd be happy to engage he, Mr. Willis, or anyone in that conversation moving forward.
Right. And that, again, is another reason that I think perhaps we can wait a month and get that information. So I'd like to make a motion that we remove this from the agenda for this month and add it to the May agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I'm totally against this. I'm going to vote against this. There's no reason to wait a month. The decision is clear. We're either going to give the administration the, the objective to, to get this done, or we're not. Waiting a month is just a delaying tactic, and then we're going to come back and say, well, we're still not, you still didn't do enough. Their job is to build policy. Their job is to do the work. Their job is to talk to the experts in the community. And there are many plentiful experts in this community from all different shades of backgrounds who can help this school district develop the best program. And I am prepared to give the direction, as a school director, to the superintendent and to the cabinet that you're going to be moving forward with this, and I'm prepared to do that next Tuesday.
Mr. Saylor, I, I think it's, it's not a question of whether or not the administration can do those things. I think we're asking for those things so that we can present it to the community because this is such a delicate topic for people. And I find it very ironic that you're so willing to jump into this based on administration's expertise when you want to doubt them in so many other areas.
That's actually what I was going to say. I find it very ironic as well that we're going to trust wholeheartedly the administration and the teachers and what they're advocating for. Let's jump and vote on it, but when it's books, all of a sudden, we don't trust them and they're grooming people, and we need to have book banning conversations. So if you could just do me a favor and get on one side and figure out how to stay there, that'd be great.
So I, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I was just going to say, you know, I don't appreciate saying that this is a delay tactic. That's not what this is for me. I'm, I'm really just trying to understand and learn how to roll this out the best way. You made a couple of comments that if we're going to do it, we should do it right. Well, I don't know that we necessarily agree on what right is, and just because two people said this is the right way doesn't mean that I think that's the right way. And I just really think that, I, I'm not trying to delay anything. I'm trying to get more information. I've asked Dr. Russell in emails for feedback from building administrators. I'd love to hear from the principals about how they feel about having an officer in each of their buildings. Yes, we heard from the union rep, but that's one person. Again, like, I, I'm not trying to delay. I'm trying to get more information. We spent more time making much smaller decisions than we're spending on this. So, you know, I, I take offense to that, that that's, that this is a tactic, you know. I really am truly trying to understand the best way to go about this, and I'm trying to listen to the community. I'm trying to listen to all of you. I'm trying to listen to Mr. Miller and take my time to really think this through. I'm not doing any tactics.
Any other discussions? Ms. White?
So to the end of what Dr. Kolar had to say, I, I go back again to the idea that this is impossible to be a unanimous decision. Writing policy in real time while something is being implemented, given the fact that we have been unable to reach consensus on policies much more mundane than this one, is, is alarming to me. And so I would like to have those details in place to alleviate any potential for disagreement or roadblocks in implementing this with fidelity. And to Mr. Miller's point about him being able to pass on research, I would like to see that research, and I would like to be able to review that research with, with thought in place of allowing this to happen in the correct way. The idea that our school district could, to your point, potentially contribute to a school-to-prison pipeline, which is a national issue, is, is, is very upsetting. And I think that it doesn't do our families of minorities on any spectrum, on any diversity, any, any justice. And no one at this table, or in this room, or in this district, would argue that we do not want to do everything possible to keep our children safe no matter what. There is absolutely no question that that is everybody's priority, which is why it can be a unanimous bipartisan effort. And with all due respect to Mr. Cerisi, with all due respect to him, and I respect him very much, he is a white man that implemented a pro, a process so many years ago. The world is not today what it was when he implemented this initiative in his school district as a school board director. We are not the same as we were then, nor should we be. And if we have the opportunity to do something correctly, we should do it correctly with fidelity to make sure that all of your efforts, Mr. Miller, to protect our school district and our children are in place.
Any other discussion? There's a motion on the floor to remove 8.07 from the agenda. In favor, we'd remove it from the agenda. Against, we'd keep it on the agenda. I'll ask for a roll call.
Dr. Campley?
Yes.
Mr. Dorr?
No.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
No.
Mr. Keenan?
No.
Dr. Kolar? Ms. White?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Saylor?
No. Motion does not carry. You can continue with the next slide.
Okay, any other questions from the school board?
Could I just ask you to talk a little bit about the question, the issue, where it might come up about chief?
About the chief?
If, yeah, because if there's going to be a chief, if there's not a chief...
He's talking about the opportunity to appoint, for example, you as chief.
If somebody's going to be appointed the chief, no one's going to be the chief, you know? It's just going to be mainly under your administration. How is that, you know, what are your, what's your vision?
I mean, I would, again, like to model it after Springford, whether the title is chief of police, director of campus safety, anything along those lines. There has to be someone that oversees this unit. So I would take on that responsibility, however it's defined by all of you.
And, and that's, I guess, the second part of my question, which I was, excuse me, which I was thinking, is there a job description for that role, or will there be one made up?
Well, it would be partially what already exists in my position, to oversee the security and, and those personnel that are in there. But we would obviously address it to the needs of the job description that we accept for these incoming officers as we do that. So there would be a lot of repetitiveness in the standpoint that the chief of the department, if that's what you want to call that person, would be doing much of the same work, or could do some of that same work, but would act more in the role of an administrator than a boots-on-the-ground type person. But that person could also fill in if someone were out sick, or if we needed two people at one school on a particular day, or, you know, there's, there's a multitude of circumstances where there could be an overlap as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the community?
Robert Liggett, Perkeelman Township. I got two questions, and Mrs. Evans-Brockett started on one of them, with the two police cars, seven people. I understand seven being an equal number, one per building. I tend to not look at things in strict equality terms. Most of the time, I'm trying to look at something as more of an equity term, whether or not the people, or in this case, a building, has what it needs. To me, saying that we have one police officer at South and one in the high school, while that's technically equal, are their needs equal as well? To me, it seems that the high school and main campus would possibly need more. With only two vehicles, I just, are we asking our SPOs that are in other places then to be essentially listening on a radio when something's going down and not have a means to get from one place to another? It, it, it seems if we're having a package for seven, we need to have the means of them to be able to support each other, and including yourself. I mean, wouldn't you, in theory, need a vehicle as well because you're kind of part of our security force as well? So to me, it seems that the ask of just two vehicles is, although may be budgetarily correct, I don't see how that gives us the full implementation that we need to, to have the safety of our students if we're doing this. It just, it seems extremely light, as does seven. If, if we're actually trying to full up this, I, I would picture at least two at the high school, perhaps one or two at middle schools. West is way out there, and if we only have one person out there and no means of supporting them, what if something happens there? Yes, there's local, you know, there's lower Frederick, but if our goal is safety and we want to go all in, I think we'd need to go all in. And seven and two cars, I don't think that's quite there yet. So you said before that your vision is to perhaps bring in four if it's available in the budget. To me, it seems almost negligent for us not to have these officers have vehicles to be able to support each other. I don't know if you want to address that. That wasn't quite a question, but, sorry about that, Dean.
That's okay.
Just get all the questions first and let me know.
Sure.
I feel like I gotta stand over here and talk to you.
You can talk to the board.
Ally Peterson Trapp, I have kind of a comment and more questions, but I was, I've kind of done personally a 180 on this. I was originally questioning whether this was a good idea. I think I've come on board with the concept. But the devil is in the details. It's my favorite phrase ever. And I feel like, unfortunately, the administration has maybe been distracted by all this other, these other shiny objects that have been coming up, rather than having the time to focus on this one, which is the, the big issue, at least one of the big issues in our district. So the questions that I have, you mentioned shifts. Well, if we're having shift differentials, first shift, second shift, that doesn't mean we have seven school police officers in every building at all times. So that's my first question. Is that correct? And if so, what is the plan for that? Because I don't think that's been discussed at all in any of these meetings. So I don't know what that looks like from a planning perspective and staffing, how you're going to have coverage, where the coverage is going to be. I get the fact that the, a lot of these details have to get worked out. But I think the expectation from the conversation that's been had already is that it's one per building. If it shifts, that's not one per building. So that's question number one. Question number two, are these 10 or 12-month employees? Because if they're only, if they're 12-month employees, what are they doing during the summer? Is that going to be a time for training? Those, that's, I wasn't sure where they fell and what contract, since they were with the school nurses, I think, or, and other administrative assistants, and I wasn't sure if that was a 10 or 12-month employee. The third question that I had was, maybe this is more of an observation, I, Mr. Subers will give you the legal advice, but I don't think you're even legally allowed to do this without adopting a policy. So you can have, from a budgetary perspective, put money in the budget, but until you adopt a policy, you can't legally employ school police officers because you have to delineate what their duties are. All the issues that have been discussed, like firearm carrying, that sort of things, has to be in your policy. And I may not be completely 100%. He's going to give you that legal advice. But what's the plan? Like, I think part of the issue that a lot of people have talked about is the rollout of this. Everybody's been focused on the money, but the details are important. And maybe if the details had been presented in conjunction with the money, there may not be as many questions from the people who have voiced concerns about the timing of this as opposed to doing it. Because what I'm hearing is that it's, people aren't necessarily opposed to doing it. It's how we're doing it. So I think those are the questions that I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Al.
I would ask you, Mr. Subers, if that is a criterion that we have to meet.
No, there's no specific requirement for a policy, but as mentioned before, the appointment and the scope of duties of the school police officers would have to be court-approved, and that petition would specify the scope of duties and authority of the school police officers within the confines of the applicable school code provision. But school districts do develop policies too, but it's not a prerequisite.
So, I'm sorry. Yeah. What are the, what are the, what, what is the order? Why is the call going to happen? And it is not...
Okay. So the process that Mr. Subers mentioned does include that petition to the court to ask for the approval for school police to take those actions, which, I think you mentioned that in the community night as well, about what that looks like and what that sounds like. So these are things that, that we need to go through. As far as the shifts, so my thinking was to provide this protective factor during the school day, and the shift at night would be, as we're doing now, school security, not necessarily school police, along with that supplemental contracted services that cover athletics, activities, and things of that nature. If we... If we had a particular event that might require that, you know, do we pay a bit of overtime or something along those lines? We can certainly facilitate that. But, the starting point for providing, uh, an armed protective presence would be during the daytime primarily. There is, I don't know the percentage. There is a small amount of overtime at this point in time, again, to get through. You mentioned 12 months versus 10 months. Another conversation that, uh, Mr. Weaver and I have been having about potentially saving some of this funding on salaries by going to a 10-month, um, and utilizing more security presence in the summertime, which that's already budgeted for. We've done it the last two years with our summer school programs and things of that nature. So, we have been doing that already. So, that's a part of the monies that are in there for our school, uh, security as a whole. But, we can focus out on some of the school police role if we, we choose to do that. Uh, Mr. Liggett, to your question about, uh, vehicles, I would love to have seven cars for seven officers. We looked at two for a monetary standpoint of where we would be if we started with, um, a rollout that we first had our discussions about. And we went out and got a price for two new vehicles fully equipped. So, if we could trim that back and get four cars that were maybe two or three years old, that maybe don't have all the bells and whistles, but can certainly allow these personnel to do their job. We already purchased a security vehicle two years ago, which would give us a fifth. So, put us in a much better position. And I will admit, in looking at the rollout for the dollars and cents as we move forward, should definitely include a capital expense for vehicles moving forward.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Miller, Judy Lofton. Um, so, I am not opposed to police officers. I also agree that we want to make sure we're doing it correctly. Um, and I really felt, you know, on board when I came to the community meeting and saw how Springford was doing it. Um, I think it could be one of many improvements that could be made in the district. However, there was a study that was mentioned during that meeting, that really keeps giving me pause. And that was a study that was published in the Journal of the American Medical Association that looked at 134 school shootings that have occurred over a defined time period. And the results of that study showed that if there was an armed individual at the building, the number of, um, the mortality was increased 2.8 times. And, that really gives me pause. And I know we've had discussion in the past of, you know, does having an armed individual in the building somehow increase the likelihood that someone's going to come to the building with a gun? And, I would just, I would like to have an answer to that question of how those data are being interpreted, and how we know that this is actually something that is going to be making the buildings safer. Because, you know, as we're talking with shifts and having everybody be there, you know, this is a really large building. And, you can have an event on one side of the building where there's a lot of mortality before the police officer arrives there. And particularly, if they don't have the transportation needed, let's say they happen to be at a meeting with Dr. Russell at the administrative building, or, you know, something, they, they just weren't right there, or they were out sick that day. There's not, this isn't a guarantee that something bad's not gonna happen. We would have to have seven officers at each building to really have that kind of perimeter of safety, essentially. And so, I, I don't know, based on the data that's been presented to me, that this is actually, you know, to Mr. Dora's point, if this is gonna save a kid's life, yes, let's do it right now. Gonna save a kid's life, done, great. But, based on the data that I've seen, I don't know that it is. And, I, I just don't know if there's been any other data that's been looked at that says, says differently. So, I, I would like to hear more about that.
So, the data that, um, is in that Journal of the American Medicine, uh, study is a concern of mine as well. And what I found in trying to get to the bottom of that study is, were we comparing apples to apples, if you will? Were we talking about schools with SROs trained to be SROs in the building? School police officers trained to be in the building? Or, what happens in a lot of our communities is they simply go to their local police department and say, "We'd like to have an officer in the building," and every day of the week, there's someone different. And was it someone who was not familiar with the dynamics of the building? Or, the dynamics of the people in that building? I, that I don't have the answer for. To, to address that number, it would be inappropriate for me to, to try and do that without that background information. And that's what I'm trying to find, uh, in conversations, not only with colleagues, but even looking through the study. But, there are concerns about that, and, and many other things that we have to take a look at, again, what does the data say? But, what is the data they're actually looking at? So, are we looking at SROs equally across the board? That, in a program like Springford has, or that Satterton has? Or are we looking at police officers that were simply in a building because the community said, "We need somebody in here every day." And, they're coming in with a totally different mindset, as we've talked about, in trying to set up and having the right people doing the right job at the right time. So, and I don't have the answer to that, I'm sorry.
If, if I may, I think there have been a lot of really helpful questions and promptings tonight. And I wonder if the board would consider tabling the motion next week and giving administration another month to address some of the details. We don't want to present in a way as if we've left things out of the plan. And it sounds to me tonight as if that's, that's a question that some individuals have, and they've prompted us to consider some important details. I would be more than happy to work with Mr. Miller and Mr. Weaver to present something that is more comprehensive, based on the feedback tonight, and request action on the part of the board in May. I am very pleased to hear that people are really more in favor of school police officers. I am very optimistic about that, I'm encouraged by that. However, I also want us to make a good impression to the community. It's a major change for them. So, I would not be opposed, and I would respectfully ask the board to consider that going into next week.
Any other questions?
Dylan Anderson, Trap Borough. Hello, Ms. Miller. Uh, I'd like to ask, will these seven officers be forced to have a clean record? Or are they allowed to have a dirty disciplinary record? Uh, as Mr. Saylor said earlier, he addressed that, your, their actions are going to be your responsibility. But, I'd prefer there not to be a reason to hold anyone accountable in the first place. And the second is, at what level of school conflict are officers allowed to make use of their weapons? So, for example, like a fight between students. That broke out around last year in November. Uh, it was two large male students around size of you. And, I do wonder, had officers been involved, would there have been forced use to subdue it, rather than the lack of inju- injuries that the fight ended with? That's all.
So, let me answer, uh, both of those questions. First, with regards to the disciplinary question, um, the process for hiring SROs, um, in Pennsylvania allows us, as a school district, to look at those disciplinary records. In fact, law enforcement agencies are required to share them with us. So, if we have someone who's not been the best at their job coming to us, we're, we're required to be able to see that. So, it's not something that we would be looking forward to advancing a candidate that would have something on their disciplinary record such as that. Uh, with regards to your question about the use of force, the force continuum, I, I don't want to get into this, all this legal thing, but the force continuum starts with the presence of a police officer simply being in a location and showing what's going on. To your question about implementing their weapon, I would hope not. Nothing that you described to me calls for the weapon to be deployed. A weapon is used to defend myself or someone in, in, in my scope from imminent bodily injury or death. And that's the only time that weapon should be used.
I have a question. So, the liability, I know you have on here for the insurance, training, and other miscellaneous items. That insurance is, is including that liability on the off chance that an officer would do something that they shouldn't have done? And, we need to then rectify the situation?
Absolutely, yes. That would be a comprehensive liability, uh, policy that we would enact.
Yeah.
So, given Dr. Russell's, um, response that we take into consideration just holding off to gather and review some more information, can we re-address the, the ask to put this to next month?
Uh, yeah, there's, if it was somebody who voted in the-
There's nothing preventing someone from making the same motion literally over and over again. That's-
Well, it's a motion to reconsider. If it's a motion to reconsider, it would have to be somebody who voted in negative.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, as far as a motion to-
No. Ms. Evans-Brockett made a motion to remove. Someone else can make a motion to table till May, they're two separate motions.
But, I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, I think, wasn't yours to remove from the agenda?
Yeah, well, technically, but, but he's actually allowing the matter to be reconsidered in his interpretation. So, I don't think it's, you really have a disagreement.
So, I guess, I, then, when, with respect to Dr. Russell's request for consideration, can we motion to-
Yeah, you can make mo-
So, I motion to table this until May.
I second.
Discussion?
I'm not for tabling it or for any delay, the-
Neither am I.
The, um, investigations, and I'm just gonna answer, so, my comment. The investigations, uh, first of all, we, we already entertain this motion. And, I appreciate all the discussion. And, there's this work to be done and to continue to be done. And I don't hear anything that anybody's opposed to, really. Uh, and all of these things can continue to be worked on over the coming months. But, the framework that we're putting in place doesn't require any delay. We need to get the budget in place. Uh, we need to give our staff and administration the go-ahead. And, we need to make sure that everything is on track to open up with SROs, SPOs, next, next fall. So that it can be done, to your point, as well as is possible. It can be done right. And the more time we give our staff and administration to hire these people and to get all of the equipment in place, and to get the, um, the plans and procedures in place, the better equipped we will be when we open next fall. So, I am not for pushing this motion back. And I encourage everybody in the community and on the board to continue to participate in the discussions and in, uh, organizing and developing this, uh, security detail. And, I am not for delay with the shooting that we just saw. If everybody, I don't know if anybody, watched the press conference, but, uh, no motive was given, and that's, it's fine. No motive for the attack was given in the Nashville shooting. But, the one, the one thing that the police chief felt was important enough to say to the entire world, and to communicate to everybody, all of us, the one point of data that we received last week was that the shooter had considered an alternate target and decided not to go there because there was too much security. So, that's additional information that we cannot, that I cannot refuse to take into account. That goes to the point that was the discussion on which school would not have an armed guard. Well, that would be the school that would be targeted by a semi-rational actor. Which schools, again, we would open it up to multiple schools without, without the defense, without the secure, without the defense of a handgun, or- And, I'm not, I'm not interested in arguing over what types of guns or weapons are okay. I, I don't want to get in to that discussion. It's not a discussion for me. It's a discussion for our police, um, to make the best decisions for our, the protection of our schools, our property, our teachers, and our students. And, uh, I, again, back to what I said earlier, encourage all input to be made. And, but, we also are not going to, I don't think anybody here is going to get in the way of professionals doing their job, the professionals with the expertise to do their jobs. And, um, and again, just wanted to reiterate, our, the time that this board, and I appreciate it all very much, the time, just so everybody knows, the time that this board has put into this has been exhaustive and intense, and has been, there has been a lot of investigation done, uh, on all of the schools surrounding us, on what they have done, on what they did right, on what they think they did wrong. Uh, so that we could do it at least, not just at least, but so that we could do it as well as they did it, and better. And also, I have a lot of experience running, or working with, uh, police force. I sat on Collegeville Borough Council for 12 years, and we had a police force of eight officers and a chief during that 12 years. And, um, I don't see any problems with this plan or with moving it forward as it stands now, and moving forward with the implementation so that we can open next year. I don't, also, I just don't see or hear any reason for the delay of one month.
Any other discussion? Without objection, call for a roll call.
Mr. Keenan?
No.
Dr. Kolar? Ms. White? Mr. Saylor?
No. Motion doesn't carry. You can continue.
Okay. So, speaking of the budget-
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Okay. So, we made three adjustments in, from the March presentation. We've added for, uh, ESB costs, or ESB expenditure revenues, I'm sorry, it's getting really- Uh, special education revenues, based upon average data, and I'll show that. And then, we're adding to the interest earnings. Again, another bump by the Fed, another .25 basis points. That all helps us with our investments. Uh, to get into a little bit more of the, the better, uh, greater detail associated with the ESB, just like last year when we went through and we were kind of unsure of how things were gonna go, um, we utilized an average base increase, uh, with where we were at for previous years. So, we did go up by 3%. That added 232,742. And remember, as I talked about earlier, uh, the ESB in the Governor's proposed budget is at 20% increase. We know that it's not gonna end up there. Uh, so, we're showing some of this, uh, piece in there with some logic behind why we're going with 3%. And in a similar fashion, same with special education, we break that out, and we go 4%. So, that shows you the backup for the 109,272. Again, we'll continue to watch that and monitor that. If Harrisburg makes progress, and we get an opportunity to really select revenue sources to us. Revenues, 120 million, 857. With those adjustments, again, as listed, some additional charts. Uh, another way to show the alternative revenue sources that we talked about, um, for interim real estate taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and interest on investments. Again, the green bar is what we're focused in on, and what we continue to show progress in for 23, 24. And also, you will, you will see the impact of that in the projection, a little bit later on. Uh, that is a huge positive source for us to move forward. Get on a little chart, backup for EIT. And again, if it, if it pleases the board, I continue to move forward. Um, expenditures- it pleases the board, I continue to move forward. Expenditures, there are absolutely no, it was appropriate to add that change in without some feedback from the board, so hopefully that's okay. And then when we get to some weekend letters, we can update that where that actually takes the interactive at that point in time. So, again, those are the numbers as we set, as we had set moving into tonight with those additional adjustments, and hearing that that, those additional positions might be of favorable impact, then we'll make the adjustments moving forward. Again, no changes as presented. Again, the major impact were the revenues, the three revenue streams that helped to bring us below a 5% at this point in time. So, we continue to watch that. Again, our first goal is to be at the 4.1 or lower. That's our Act One index. Now, we continue to move forward with that. As a, as a matter of fact, questions on the budget as it stands now, we do know that it's a work in progress. We continue to work on those factors. I've got some additional information here. Any questions from the community? Okay, thank you. Peasars Reserve Uses. We talked a little bit about tonight's the COVID-19 reserve. Again, just going through some of the history, I haven't really changed much of that, just to show you where the balances are. Keep in mind, we do have the unassigned fund balance, the unreserved fund balance. And I know Mrs. Evans-Brockett mentioned today, a little bit earlier, that we continue, right now, this is where we stand at the 1,051,000 as board approved. Again, some backup spreadsheets associated with that, and that red line item there at the bottom essentially talks about the fact that that 371, 338, the recommendation is to use that for educational moving forward. We do know as historically perspective, we have always utilized and taken care of our business. That's how we've kind of phrased it. We need to take care of our budget. Let Harrisburg do, do what Harrisburg does, which is maybe, and that's what we do. We take care of business. And then what we all, we all agree on is that if we get more money, this is what we'll do with that money if it eventually comes in. So, again, that was the hedge. That was the discussion point. Amy and I felt comfortable with that moving forward. Great conversation earlier. Mrs. Smith's presentation, again, just to reiterate, working together in conjunction with the Education Committee and the Finance Committee, that we're on the same page moving forward. There's some additional backup associated with that item. So, for illustrative purposes, if you look at where that, that number is, you can see there that, that would take us as recommendation for the fund balance. Okay, and then we, we know about the conversation piece about the COVID reserve. Mr. Saylor?
Question. Do you know what the number was the last couple of years? Give this a roundabout number, because public education has increased each year under Governor Wolf. What was the changeover last year from what we were, were looking at to what actually came through? Do we know, remember how big that number?
Just wanted to see real quick. I'm sorry, I don't want to keep everybody up here. My, where we got to the explanation here. Sorry. There we go. All right, so, I don't know, Amy, and she's got a glazed view. I'm sorry. Okay, which I never see, so it's...
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, okay, sorry about that. But we can, we can verify those numbers. Mr. Saylor. Okay. Any question? Oh, no, we already did that. Okay, sorry. Any questions from the community on that? Okay, thank you. All right. So, now our projections. So, Mrs. Hurd and I, we meet, we have a lot, really, eight and a half months' worth of data. So, our unassigned fund balance after uses was $9.6 million. By design, remember, we utilized 1 million, 1 and 1/2 million dollars associated with that out of the unassigned fund balance, plus this is in the revenues, really, for the interest earnings, the earned income tax earnings, that again, we continue to show for '23, '24 those results, but for '22, '23, we are exceeding in those two categories. That's driving almost a difference of about $600,000. We should have spent 1.5 million from unassigned fund balance by design. Instead, we're only gonna spend about $400,000. So, that's a positive influence. That means when this money's moving forward. Okay? Any questions on that? We'll update the projection. It may change. It may fluctuate a little bit, and in June as well. Any questions from the community? Okay. One other piece. We did order in February a stakebody truck to replace the one that had died. This was part of our normal capital asset refreshment program. We approved it. We sent the purchase order to Burgies. We waited around for a couple of weeks, almost a month, and then we were notified by Burgies that they didn't have the truck. However, they do have another truck. Approval was for $55,013. Again, this doesn't usually happen. However, the past couple of times that we've actually purchased trucks and vehicles, we've run into that whole supply chain issue thing. The board is well aware that we approved trucks. We had to wait almost a year and a half. That messed up our entire financing rate before. So, this is unusual for us in general. However, in the, when held to a certain criteria, he is recommending, and I would recommend with him and his expertise, that with these additional items associated with the truck, that I would recommend that we move forward to approve 59,393 and 26 cents. Again, we currently don't have the stakebody truck, and we desperately, and again, because we can get it, and Burgies has guaranteed that they will hold the truck until April 12th, this will come out of, committed for capital projects then. Okay? And the other benefit is that I get to take $55,000 out of the '23, '24 projected budget because we no longer need that truck. Okay? Any questions on that?
If yours...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions? Mr. Dorr? It certainly would...
Gonna sell it to somebody else tomorrow.
Well, we didn't think that they would sell the first, the first four trucks, yes.
I mean, I would, I'm with Mr. Dorr, and I'm just, one day just makes, it just feels like it's cutting it close, that's all. So, I just didn't know if you need...
Could I make a motion now?
No, it's on, it's on there.
Okay, right.
Well, are we gonna move it tonight, though?
Move $55,000 from the expenditures because I did include that, not knowing when it would be fulfilled. So, I do appreciate that. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Items 5.02 through 510 were all included in Finance Committee of the whole, so if there's no objections, we'll move all of those to consent. 513 is an approval of a confidential settlement and release agreement. Are there any questions? Move that to consent. 514 was presented in Education Committee of the whole. I request that we keep that off consent. 515, we're gonna move on tonight. The motion to approve the purchase of a stakebody truck, and I say move.
Can I just ask for...
Yeah, hold on.
A minor revision to that because it wasn't on the agenda. It's an actual item. Motion to move the agenda and to move this item forward for the reasons set forth, because of the purchase deadline date. Ms. Evans-Brockett, are you okay with that proposal?
What he said.
Wait, is that to amend the agenda?
Amend and approve.
Okay.
You need to give a reason why you're amending it. We're saying that there's circumstances that the truck could get sold.
I was just making sure. I didn't hear amend.
Right, no, this is, we'll do both in one motion, but I want to amend the agenda and approve it.
Is there a second to that? Mrs. Weiner, do you have that? Yeah, all right. Without objection, are there, I assume there are no discussions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Oh, sorry. I'm just speaking. Yes.
Ayes have it.
516 is just a report on grants and donations.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Mr. Fountain?
601, 632, we will be...
Thank you. Ms. White?
Items 7.1, 2, 4, 5 are all on consent. 7.3 is a placeholder, as is 7.6 and 7. Those are all for next week. And 7, 8, I'm sorry, 8, 9, and 10 are all approval of memorandum of agreement. Is there any conversation around those?
You haven't been presented with the actual MOA, so I would just say keep those off the consent until you have, you will have them, admin will have them tomorrow.
Understood. So, those will be not placed on consent.
Mr. Ke, thank you. Mr. Keenan?
For personnel, 1, 801, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 are all consent. 8.07 is...
Not, will not be on consent.
I know. Approval of school boards, school facilities, opposition positions, that will not be on consent. 8.08, we have approval of separation agreement. That, can that go on consent?
Yeah.
All right.
9 can't, correct.
9 cannot.
Yeah, 9 cannot go on consent.
Approval of memorandum of agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Dorr?
9.01, first reading on policies. They are listed above 122, 137, 137.1, 137.2, 137.3, 246, 619, 625, 716, 810.2, and 818.
Thank you.
Thank you. 9.02, the motion to approve student loan resolution. If there's no objection, move this to consent.
No objection.
That ends my section.
Comments in the audience? Comments from board members? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Thank you. Yesterday was Autism Acceptance Day, kicking off April's World Autism Month, so I just want to take a moment to celebrate individuals with autism and those in the neurodivergent community as we continue to work towards equity and inclusion for all. And then regarding public comments earlier, I sat here and watched people laugh as our students spoke and shared their truths. It's unacceptable and disrespectful behavior anytime, but to do that to students is reprehensible. And then these are the same people that came up to our microphone and accused our teachers of being groomers. And as Ms. Peterson said, that's unacceptable. I'll sit here week after week and listen to the attacks on me because I choose to exercise my First Amendment right not to stand for the pledge, but I'm an elected official. I chose to put myself in this position. It is not okay to do that to our students and our teachers. And I know that the people that are here now are not those doing it, but we need to do better.
Dr. Koller?
I was gonna say something similar. I actually wanted to thank our students and librarians, especially for speaking tonight. Unfortunately, none of them are here, but I really do appreciate the student voice, and I found it very disheartening that the students who were brave enough to come up and speak, knowing that not everybody agreed with them, were then heckled by some. And I think we need to do better. We heard so much about bullying, and that was a clear example of bullying that's going on. And if it's happening at a board meeting in front of adults, I can't even imagine what's happening in our schools. And that said, we are supposed to be here for the students, so I hope we were all truly listening to the students and what they had to say today during their walkout, today when they spoke. And we're also supposed to be here to support our staff. And going back to that issue, grooming in the sense that it was used tonight means developing a relationship with someone with the intent of exploiting them or abusing them. And I really hope that we are not sitting here thinking that our staff is developing these types of grooming relationships with our students. And I really hope that we do better when we choose words that we use when we speak about our staff, about our students, to our staff, to our students. All of us really need to do better.
So, I will...
Mr. Dorr?
Reiterate all of that. School's supposed to be a safe place, and we trust our teachers, our staff. And when we remove that trust and we make accusations that can not only put their job in jeopardy, but put their, their entire livelihoods in jeopardy, it's not right, it's not fair. As far as the students who walked out today, I typically work during the day, so I can't come to events, and I got to witness their maturity and the way that they composed and held themselves during that walkout. I was very impressed. The way they come to board meetings and speak with eloquence and with passion, they're not children. When we're talking about these books, we're not talking about giving them to, as one of the students said, five-year-olds. These are young adults, and they should be trusted to start thinking critically and being able to look through windows and mirrors at literature. And we need to trust our staff that they're going to look at book challenges, they're going to look at books that are coming in, and they're going to make the right decisions. And if a parent opposes a book, there are more than enough ways for that parent to make sure that their child does not get that book. But I, we definitely need to do better as far as the respect that we give our kids.
Mr. Dorr, before you go, if you don't mind. Do you mind if I go? And then you can go?
Seriously?
Well, not necessarily, but sure, go ahead.
While I don't appreciate being called up by a community member telling me that if I don't call out a community member for giving up and speaking their opinion, I do think we all need to do better. It's sad to see each group yell, laugh at each other, snicker and everything else. I think we just need to do a better job of listening, and I just hope this gets better.
So, my dad used to say, "There's nothing more American than a peanut butter and jelly sandwich." Of course, he said that when we would have peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, and he would put banana on it. I didn't really care for the banana, but he would say, "There's nothing better than a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. There's nothing more American." I spoke to a lot of the students who participated in, in the activity in the walkout today. There's literally nothing more American than a good old-fashioned protest. It goes back to the founding of our republic. When we were throwing tea, you know, we were throwing tea in the water, we were protesting, you know, the British Empire. I, I am really proud of the students that protested today. I'm proud of the students that felt that there was an issue, that they wanted me to hear, that they wanted other board members to hear. There's literally nothing more American than a protest, and I'm really proud of those students. And I got to speak to about 30 or 40 of those students throughout after, after the walkout before I came here today. I saw a lot of their pictures, so I reached out a lot of the kids that I knew, and I wanted to talk, and I wanted to understand what they were thinking, what they were hearing, what they were talking about. So, I'm really, really proud of them. I have never, I don't like the word groomer. I don't really like hot topic words. I don't think anyone in our school district is a groomer. I don't think our librarians are groomers. I don't think our teachers are bad. I don't think our librarians are bad. I spoke to the, the teachers, the first, you know, there was a, an opportunity to talk to the staff, the teachers before school started. I talked about my relationships with Mrs. Neathsmith and Atkins and Devlin's and Mrs. Quaid, Mr. Waters, and who are all these names that I just throw out on the top of my head? Those were my teachers in my elementary school. They didn't look like me. Okay? They didn't look like me. They weren't my color skin. Most of my teachers growing up were African-American teachers, first grade, second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. Mrs. Watson, who was, she wasn't our vice principal, but she was, she ran the school. She worked with troubled students. I went to a different middle school where I didn't know anybody. She took me out of a bad path and helped me put forth a more righteous light. I think the teachers that I've had growing up in the public school system at CCA Baldi, Louis H. Farrell, Ron Hurst, and George Washington were great. And my son has been in this school district since first grade. They are great. There is not an accusation coming from me that our teachers, that our administrators, that anyone that works in this building is a groomer and that aren't great. My concerns, and I don't want to rehash this because this will go to policy, my concerns are a differential. They're not a negative to the tool that our, our staff does. And so, that's what I, I wanted to talk about. I'm really proud of the students today and the student body. Ms. White?
Mrs. Peterson, I just want to thank you for coming out and for all of your advocacy and the work that you do for the school district. Not only do our students benefit from it, but our teachers, I know that they greatly appreciate all of the support that the foundation gets, and I know Mr. Weaver, I'm sure, appreciates the help with the budget. That being said, what you spoke about with regards to the emotion that you felt was very similar to the emotion that I felt at our policy meeting last month by the consistent use of rhetoric and what I, what I offer as a, as a trigger in terms of personal experience and lived experience for various individuals in this community that continue to be overlooked by others in the community. And so, with regards to that, I don't even believe that it needs to be said, but I don't think that words like groomer should be associated with an educational setting at all. As a matter of fact, anyone that actually has experienced that phenomenon would take such offense to it that they are beyond moved, almost to the point that they don't have words to speak with regards to what that actually means when you say it. So, that being said, I think that with regards to the community as a whole, what I would like to see and what I would like to continue to advocate for is acknowledgement of the privilege that we all sit in, being part of this community and being part of this district. And the idea that there are some that refuse to acknowledge that privilege to... um, to me, makes me feel more inclined to continue to steadfastly acknowledge my privilege, which is the reason that I don't stand for the pledge, and then I love this country, and I love those that serve this country, and I appreciate those that put themselves in the, in the path of, of danger to protect my ability to have the privilege that I have as an American, and as an elected official. So with regards to all of the rhetoric that is constantly being thrown our way, I will continue to advocate and promote my privilege and support all of the efforts of our administrators, our teachers, our staff, and most importantly, the students that we are elected to serve. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, any other discussions? Seeing none, oh, I apologize.
Okay, I just want to extend appreciation for those of you that have spoken up and again, supported our students who, who stood up today, this evening and spoke or wa, walked out and had their voices heard about the policies, I appreciate that. And dismissing this idea of grooming is absolutely one that we need to do, so thank you, Ally Peterson, for calling that out. Um, I would also like to suggest, unless someone has a strong opposition, that we bring an ad hoc committee together for safety and operations, and we really move through some of these details and questions that have been posed tonight, so if it's okay with the board, the last members were Ms. White, Mr. Dorr, Mrs. Mares, and Mrs. Evans-Brockett. I wonder if I could schedule a couple of conversations and we could tease out some of this information in a smaller setting and address some of the questions, and then be prepared moving forward to share that out with the board on a regular basis.
Yeah, just be cognizant, like, he's got another committee that he's on and other board members have, just make sure that it's not on a day when, like, Central Perk is meeting with the committee that you're on and other committees that people are on.
Thank you.
10.03 is a notice of video recording, a before adjournment for the people that are still here, and for the people maybe watching tomorrow, the meeting is Tuesday, not Monday. Have a great Passover, have a great Easter, and I'll see you next week. I rule adjournment. So Matt, who won the game?
Don't tell me. Don't even say it.
I don't know. Duke won. Duke won.